This meeting to order will be conducted this evening's meeting in a virtual setting. Council members and staff are participating from remote locations. And Deputy City Clerk Mona Schilling is in chamber to accommodate public communication. Members of the public may view and listen to the meeting live this evening on Spectrum Channel 3 and 22, AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99, and/or El Segundo TV at YouTube.com. Please remember to mute your mics when not speaking. And council members, if making a motion or second, please do so using your last name in order for the clerk to hear and report correctly. And before we even get started this evening, we lost a very fine young man in El Segundo recently last week. And I know a couple members of the city council would like to say a few words about young Drake Walker. And I'll turn it over to Councilmember Drew and then anyone else that would like to speak.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, in about July of 2018, I, like many of you, saw a post from Leslie Walker that her seven-year-old son Drake had been diagnosed with an inoperable cancerous brain tumor. There was no treatment. No one had ever survived this diagnosis. And the prognosis was that he would not make it nine months. It was shocking. It was sad. It was infuriating. And above all, it was heartbreaking. I'm sure all of us hugged our children a little tighter that night, knowing firsthand how precious life can be. Over the next two years, though, I watched with equal parts fascination, awe, and admiration at how the Walker family attacked not only the tumor, but life itself. I watched an entire community, actually several communities, rally around that family. But what was more incredible than that was watching the family rally around itself. They made a conscious decision to cherish every single moment that they had with their son to the limit. You could feel it in the words that Leslie wrote and see it in the faces displayed in the photos posted from all the family trips that they have been taking. Drake would never for a single moment question how much he was loved. Now, I'm not a religious man. But to see the strength of the faith of the Walker family and their trust in God is something I will never forget. We all actually saw faith carry a family through a living hell. And while I've heard of this happening, I had never actually seen that with my own eyes. I also remember watching posts and pictures of Drake and his father James taking multiple trips for experimental therapy, therapies, chemo, surgery, and other different treatments. I remember thinking, this is not just the toughest seven-year-old I've seen. He may be the toughest person I've ever seen. This kid would fly up in the morning, so I believe it was NorCal, you know, have a surgery or something by about noon and then be smiling and eating pancakes by five o'clock that evening. It was incredible. I mean, who does that? And this was every two weeks this was happening. Now, James, Leslie, Taryn, James V., and Gigi, as a community, our collective hearts bleed for you all. I mean, I know that there is nothing any of us can do to make it all better. But I do want to say one thing, and that is, thank you. Thank you for allowing us all to see what a true warrior looks like in your son Drake and what an incredibly strong and loving family looks like. Neither Drake nor any of you ever gave up hope during this process. Leslie, while I cannot imagine the range of emotions that you were feeling as you continued to post Drake's story over the past two years, I have to say we are all better people for having witnessed that journey. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Drew. Any other council members like to say a few words?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would just like to echo Councilmember Drew's comments that that young man showed us all a lesson in courage. Courage to face his challenge, courage to support his family, courage to, you know, show resilience, whether it was leading the parade down Candy Cane Lane, taking the mound as his team's number-one starter, and watching a kid, watching a child go through that and then lead the marauders out to a fabulous regular season as a pitcher. There is not much to add. It is a testament to his family, testament to all the communities that supported him, but it's a testament to him. And it's just a massive loss, and our condolences. I don't think there's much more to say.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. All right, we're going to go to a moment of silence in honor of Drake Walker. And so let's just take about, let's take some time, honor him. Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you both for those kind words. Thank you. And thank you to the Walker family. El Segundo is here for you if you need anything. We're going to have the invocation tonight will be provided by City Clerk. And then Councilmember Persak will lead the pledge of allegiance.
Okay. Heavenly Father, we come to you asking for your blessing and help as we are gathered together. We pray for your guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Help us to work together and encourage each other to excellence. We ask that we would challenge each other to reach higher and farther, to be the best we can. We ask this in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Persak?
Yes, please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Persak. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, Madam Clerk, may we please have the roll call?
Absolutely. Councilmember Drew?
Here.
Councilmember Nicole?
Here.
Councilmember Persak?
Here.
Mayor Potem Pimentel?
Here.
And Mayor Boiles?
Here. Thank you. Madam Deputy City Clerk, is there anyone in chamber wishing to speak?
No, we have no one here tonight to speak.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, have you received any written communication?
No, the written communication I have received will actually be read during the budget section. So I have nothing for this evening.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right. So we have some special presentations. So we've got one, I've got a proclamation to read. I know Chief Whalen is going to be accepting this, and Chief's on the call. And this is a proclamation regarding National Night Out. Whereas National Night Out is an annual community building campaign that promotes police-community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods safer, more caring places to live. And whereas National Night Out strengthens the relationship between neighbors and law enforcement while enhancing a true sense of community, provides a great opportunity to bring police and neighbors together under positive circumstances. And whereas National Night Out provides an opportunity for the city of El Segundo to join together with thousands of communities and millions of neighbors across the country in support of safer neighborhoods and to demonstrate the success of cooperative crime prevention efforts. And whereas the men and women of the El Segundo Police Department in partnership with the community work tirelessly to apply the core values of respect, integrity, service, and excellence to every community interaction. And whereas National Night Out is normally celebrated on the first Tuesday in August, but due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the event was nationally rescheduled. The El Segundo Police Department encourages everyone to participate in a unique virtual format. Now therefore, the mayor and members of the city council, the city of El Segundo, California, hereby proclaim the October 6, 2020, as National Night Out. And we urge all citizens to participate and promote police-community partnership, crime prevention, and neighborhood camaraderie. Timing couldn't be better, I think. And so Chief, I'd love to turn it over to you to talk about this, and thank you so much for being here.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for this proclamation. Two years ago, staffs came to me and really wanted to have a big presence in this space, in the National Night Out space. And we did. And you guys will remember that we had quite a bit of display and shows and interaction on Main Street. And in fact, this year, we had even discussed moving the council meeting by a night so that we could participate on the actual National Night Out date, which is the first Tuesday in August. Last year, we moved our National Night Out celebration to Wednesday so that you all could participate in the event as well. And we were very excited to get that going and the planning for that. But unfortunately, as we know, the restrictions in place by the health orders don't allow that. So our team got together, and I'm really proud of what they put together, where many police departments, quite frankly, weren't doing a lot this year. Our Community Engagement Division wanted to still have as robust a presence as we could. So on October 6, it's going to be a virtual day. And it's going to start at 10 o'clock. I'll have a question-and-answer period. Then at 11, they'll be able to watch videos of our K-9 demonstration, followed by our school resource officers giving a presentation at 12. At 1, our SWAT team is going to be putting on a demonstration. At 2, we're going to talk about our homeless outreach programs. And then at 3, it's going to end with a discussion on crime prevention in our reinvigorated Neighborhood Watch program. So I really hope the public will be able to tune in, and it will be recorded for viewing later if you're not or if people aren't actually able to make it at that particular time. And then we're all hoping that next year we'll be able to get back into the in-person neighborhood or the National Night Out, which we believe was so successful. So again, thank you very much for that proclamation.
Excellent. Thank you, Chief. Thanks for doing that. We look forward to that. All right, next up, we've got a long overdue commendation. And so I'm going to turn it over to Councilor Persak to read this really special commendation.
So I'm excited to read this for Mr. Spackman. So the city of El Segundo accommodation, whereas for three decades, Ron Spackman served as the policy, government, and public affairs manager for Chevron. And whereas Rod proudly served as a business and community leader, as Chevron's representative and elected officials, regulatory agencies, media, community groups, and numerous nonprofits. And whereas his leadership role has included serving on the board of directors for many businesses and community organizations, including Town Hall, Los Angeles Chamber, Valley Industry and Commerce Association, California State University Board, California Council of Economic Education, and he is a founding member of the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission. And whereas, as a longtime resident of the South Bay, Rod's love for the community of El Segundo and passion for civic engagement and STEM in education support has been recognized by both our school district and education foundation. And whereas Rod was an integral part of many local initiatives in El Segundo, including the community support for El Segundo Education Foundation, the Chamber of Commerce, and the El Segundo Economic Development Advisory Council. And whereas Rod enjoyed and never missed El Segundo's annual holiday parade, where he and hundreds of refinery employees escorted sand that's on a damp green tree to the life of thousands of children. And whereas Mr. Spackman began his professional career in Washington, DC, as a staff member of the White House, and his business and political acumen and dedication to nonprofit organizations has been a shining star for the county, for the country, state, county, and city. Now therefore, on this 15th day of September, 2020, the mayor and the members of the city council of El Segundo hereby extend our congratulations and sincere best wishes to Rod Spackman on his return. So congratulations, Rod. And I know you'd like to say a few words, and then Jeff Wilson from Chevron is also going to say a few words. So Rod, you have the floor.
Do you want, is Jeff going to go? Or do you want me to go?
You can go first.
I go first? Okay. Well, listen, Councilwoman Prizik, Mayor Boiles, all the members of the council, I just want to say thanks. I got my wife here with me. She's the most important part of this organization. And I just want to say thanks on behalf of both of us for the pleasure we've had of being part of the El Segundo community for the last 32-plus years. It's been a real, it's been a real rewarding and heartfelt relationship with the community of El Segundo. I am ever, ever proud of the work that we've done as a company to help be part of the community. I was fortunate enough to be that the company's representative in that regard in many respects. But more, just as importantly, all the people in the community. And you heard a story before, at the first part of the council meeting about a family and the fight with one of their kids relative to cancer. It says a lot about the spirit of this community when you hear a story like that. So I can't help but be, I can't help but be moved and very appreciative of the recognition you're providing this evening. I left the building on Friday, as they say. They shut down the computer. They took away all my toys. I got nothing left, you know, all of that. But I'm not going far. We're not going far. And we just want to say thank you so much again for the recognition and for the opportunity to be part of the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Rod. And Jeff Wilson, who is now replacing Rod, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Councilwoman, and thank you, Mayor Boiles and staff and member of the community. What, while the company's losing 40-year advocate and a model and a pioneer for civic engagement and leadership of the broader business community, to be a responsible and a good steward of your community and the environment and to be ever mindful of safety and how your employees conduct their business day in, day out, the community is gaining back a full-time citizen. So Mayor Boiles and a member of the council, grab him and use him. I will tell you, what I've learned under Rod and what Lily and the rest of our facility has is nothing short of amazing. Rod doesn't, Rod doesn't talk about it a lot, but he understates what his White House experience entailed. Forty years ago, before he started his career, he worked in the White House. But he happened to work in the White House when his roommate happened to be the son of the President of the United States. So the insight and I'll say probably the likely shenanigans that took place, but also the real, real lessons in leadership. And again, what it is to be a patriot and a responsible citizen, I think, have been long instilled. So from our company's perspective, what lives and forever live is Rod's legacy as our community advisory panel that Rod shaped and created takes great, it's become a model across, you know, our enterprise and other companies. Certainly, the transparency that we operate as a company and our continuing opportunities surrounding a tour day, which Rod takes such great pride in. What's going to be hard for me to replicate is the grin and the smile he has when he walks down the holiday parade route handing out T-shirts and candy. And I'm just going to have to grow in that role. So I promise to do my best. And again, thank you, citizens. Thank you, community for El Segundo. And most importantly, thank you, Rod Marguerite, for what you've done for all of us.
Awesome. Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Councilmember Persak. Thank you so much, Rod. And I just want to say really quick, it's like you and Chevron have your fingerprints on every good benevolent kind of outcome in El Segundo. It's so good to see, and I reflect really fondly on the EDAC committee and how you guys really, with Lily on EDAC, and you guys being the first really sponsor of that committee. And you really made that thing vibrant again after 26 years of being somewhat, you know, around. It's dormant most recently. So thank you for everything you've done, and I'm sure we'll see you around, you know, either at the golf course or somewhere around town, I'm sure. So thank you for all your years of service. Really appreciate it, Rod. All right. Wish it was in person, but good nonetheless. Let's see, let's go on to item three, special presentations. We have a COVID-19 update from Chief Donovan.
Mayor, members of council, thank you. This is definitely a tough act to follow. And Rod, from the fire department and from me personally, thank you for the support and enjoy your retirement. You will be missed. So Mayor, the COVID update that I have, I have a quick slide deck that I'd like to share with you and the community. These numbers are effective as of today, so we were able to update the numbers today. This is the current health metrics that's put out by LA County Public Health. This shows the number of cases from the United States down to California, LA County, and then granularly into El Segundo. And you'll notice that although it's unfortunate that there's 474 new cases of COVID-19 in LA County and 47 deaths, this is a very strong trajectory in the downward motion in terms of our number of cases. And so as it relates to the trend, this is very favorable as we move closer to meeting the threshold that the state has identified to move from tier one to tier two. Specifically for El Segundo, we have 128 cases cumulatively, one death. We have six adjusted cases. That means that there are six people that in the last 14 days have been diagnosed with COVID-19. As it relates to our effect metric, this is an important number that we have been reporting on. This demonstrates the number of people that will be infected by a positive COVID patient. When we began reporting, this number was well above three, meaning one infected person would infect three other people. Now this number is below 1.86 people can be impacted and infected by COVID-19. And I would say that in our community, I'll show you some numbers that are very favorable that shows how we have been working very hard to stop the spread of COVID-19. This is again, the tiered framework that the state, the governor identified two weeks ago. And it identifies there are two metrics, new cases per 100,000, and then test positives that are tallied each day. And then they do a seven-day rolling average. And if you'll remember, the state is looking at each county individually. They're doing a one-week look back. The numbers are posted on Tuesday each week of the previous week. And then the goal is that you would hold the numbers in your respective tier for at least two weeks before moving forward. As directed at the last council meeting, the city council asked that we would provide some comparison data. We've been able to look at the LA County website. We were able to pull the data from the website, and we were able to then identify the countywide numbers. And so countywide, we're now at 8.1 cases per 100,000 and a 3.2% positivity rate. But then as we drill into that a little bit further and we compare it to the South Bay cities, if the South Bay cities were their own entity, they'd have a case rate of 4.1 per 100,000 and a test positivity rate of 5.5%, which is certainly a better health data. And then if you look at El Segundo, if we were treated as our standalone entity, our case rate is 2.6 per 100,000 population, and our test positivity rate is 1.7. And by comparison, the LA County numbers would keep us at tier one because of the case rate being above seven, we wouldn't be able to move. The South Bay cities would be at a tier two, and the El Segundo would be at a tier three if we were standalone. And what that means is we would have more opportunity to open up for industry, businesses, in dining, in restaurants, hair salons, and youth sports and the like. Lastly, I wanted to touch on, from a cost reimbursement perspective, we have been authorized and have already received $380,564 in reimbursement from CalOES. This is part of the Stafford Act, as well as Corona relief funding in the CARES Act, which is related to our ambulance transport program. And we have $680,000 pending. This is money that's been authorized, and we will be seeking and anticipating reimbursement checks in the future. So we've been doing a very good job of paying attention to our costs, but also documenting our costs and submitting for reimbursement through the local emergency. Finally, I want to share with you an update. The council was made aware of, as we looked to onboard public into the public buildings, bringing folks in to do business such as plan checking or paying for bills or other routine business at City Hall, we were able to implement touchless temperature kiosks. There's one now at the front doors of City Hall. And what this allows is hands-free, somebody can put their face against a small screen, and it immediately reads their temperature and determines that they are below the threshold of a high fever and are able to then go into City Hall. We've deployed this at the library, at the entrance to City Hall, at the entrance to the police department. And we're looking to perhaps purchase a few more at other high-public areas moving forward. And so I'll end my presentation, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chief. Great news on the downward trend, especially for El Segundo. Councilmembers, any comments, questions? No? Okay, thank you. And just to remind the public that the council did send a letter to Governor Newsom late last week, asking that we be measured independently of the rest of LA County for the criteria for the new tiers, purple, red, et cetera, that Chief talked about. All right. Thank you, Chief. So next up, we have Deputy City Manager Barbara Voss on the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee.
Good evening, Mayor Boiles and members of council. I just wanted to backtrack for one second and say thank you so much to Rod Spackman and Chevron. And as Mayor Boiles mentioned, Chevron has provided over $1 million in grants over the years to economic development. So I just wanted to echo that comment and say thank you and congratulations to Rod. So Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, as I reported last council meeting, we received 69 applicants for this committee. And the initial review process included our consultant, Jimmy Pete, reviewing each application. All the applications are available online on the city's website under Committees, Commissions, and Boards. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee has its own section of that page. And from that initial review, Mr. Pete selected the top 35 candidates. And over the last week, interviewed each of the 35 candidates via Zoom, asked all candidates the same questions, and from their responses, selected a recommendation of 20 top candidates to move forward into the final phase, the third phase of this process, which is going to city council for an interview. And the interviews with city council are being scheduled now. The anticipated dates are the week of September 21 and September 28. But again, we're working on scheduling those. Once city council has interviewed all the candidates, they will select the nine members of the committee. And at the October 6 meeting, they will announce that selection. We have very, very strong candidates and looking forward to a very productive committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Voss. Any questions or comments? Just look like it. All right. Thank you. We look forward to that. Doesn't look like it. All right. Thank you. We look forward to that. All right, now on to procedural motions. Consideration of a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda by title only. State your last name. Do I have a motion to read all ordinances and resolutions by title only?
Nickel, so moved.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Jeru?
Yes.
Councilmember Nickel?
Hi.
Councilmember Persak?
Hi.
Mayor Protem Pimentel?
Yes.
And Mayor Boils?
Yes.
Okay, passes five oh.
Thank you. All right, consent calendar, items one through five. Are there any pulls? Doesn't look like it. Okay, do I have a motion to approve items one through five?
Jeru, so moves.
Thank you, sir.
Pimentel, second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Jeru?
Yes.
Councilmember, excuse me, Councilmember Nickel?
Hi.
Councilmember Persak?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Pimentel?
Hi.
And Mayor Boils?
Yes.
Okay, consent passes five oh.
Great. Thanks, Ms.
Just, I know we're moving staff presentations up, but Matt is having difficulties getting on.
Okay.
So I'm not sure if, if you want to, I don't know.
Let's go to, should we go to item seven then, the public master fee schedule, public hearing? Mr. Mitnick, what do you suggest? Yeah?
That would work, sir.
Okay, let's do it. Thank you.
So Finance Director Joe Lilio will do the fee schedule item.
Great.
Okay, just give me one minute, one minute and I'll pull up the presentation.
Okay, Drew, it's a public hearing, so you need to.
Oh, yes, thank you. Well, he's waiting, doing that. Great, great point. This is time and place here to fix for a public hearing regarding adopting a resolution approving an update to the master fee schedule to amend current fees for services provided by the city excluding utility services and development impact fees. City Clerk, was proper notice of the hearing given in a timely manner?
Yes, it was.
Thank you. Has any written communication been received?
We have not received any.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Lilio, take it away. When are you ready?
Good evening, Mayor Boils, City Councilmembers. So the item before you tonight is the update to the city's master fee schedule. So in 2017, a full cost allocation and comprehensive citywide fee study was done and conducted. In 2018, the city council adopted the cost allocation plan and the citywide master fee schedule. Per city council direction, staff committed to returning each year to address inflationary increases to the cost of services and fees provided. The master fee schedule was adjusted in September 2019 by the LA Riverside Orange County Consumer Price Index. So that was the first time that the city had done such action. And now we're coming back for the second time that we're doing this. So for fiscal year 2020, 2021, staff is proposing a CPI adjustment of 1.4% to the master fee schedule. And that's based on, again, the LA Riverside, Orange County, June 2020 CPI. The estimated fiscal impact from the proposed fee changes is approximately $100,000 in additional revenue for 2021. There are several recreation fees being corrected as far as the fees. As delineated in the staff report, the fees are corrected to reflect the correct hourly rate. There are numerous services fees that are no longer provided or have been incorporated. The other service fees that will be removed from the master fee schedule. And again, this is delineated in the staff report as well. And there are four new fees being proposed as delineated in the staff report. And that concludes my presentation. I'm open to any questions.
Okay. Councilmembers? Mayor Protem or Scott?
Yeah, I have a, I noticed that we have a, we capture a reimbursement fee for misdemeanor bookings. That's the only one on our fee schedule for law enforcement that doesn't stipulate due upon conviction. Are we charging fees to people who are arrested and booked but not convicted of a misdemeanor?
So I, I know we do have a DUI fee as well.
Now.
DUI is due upon misdemeanor. That one specifically notes that that, that fee is recouped upon conviction. I just noted the misdemeanor booking one did not delineate due upon conviction. I think that, that's just a question I would, there's not a scenario, is there a scenario by which someone could be arrested, booked, and acquitted and still sent a bill by the city of El Segundo?
To my knowledge, I am not aware of any. I don't know if Chief Wayland's on the line or not, but I do not believe, Mayor Protem, that there are any such fees like that besides that misdemeanor fee.
Chief just took a mouse, his self off mute, so.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protem. That is one that when charged is charged at conviction and it's part of what the judge does and administers. More than likely, that fee is paid through the form of community service at the time of sentencing. And that's why we actually don't get very much from that. I think Joe Lilio can attest that we have maybe a couple hundred dollars we've received year to date in that fund. So we don't really get much from it, but it is authorized by the government code. We do ask for it to be reimbursed to the city. However, it generally is waived for one reason or another.
Thank you. I was, I was just checking because it did not have that upon conviction stipulation in it, but that is, that's fine. Oh, I, I have a question for you. That, that's all, Chief, that I, that I have on the law enforcement side. Thank you very much. Joe, if I may ask, on, I, I note that we still break out the different licensing fees for things like auctions, pool halls, fortune telling, or, or those, are we capturing data from those? Or are we just, are we regulating those differently? And that's why those are enumerated as separate fees? I, I don't mean that, that we should pour into how much we're charging to license those. But when we look to the update, the administrative code down the road, are we gleaning anything from splitting those out? Or are things that we should look to clean up in the administrative code by having these extra items? Alternatively, if we're regulating them separately, then I could see why we break them out. It just seems as though having people have separate forms and registrations for some of these niche, and in some cases, anachronistic business types, would seem like some would want to clear up. Do you have any insight on that?
But it goes back to our business license tax ordinance where, you know, most of the language was developed in the 50s and 60s. We had some updates in the 70s and 80s and, and some, I think as early as the early 2000s. But there is definitely a wide range of cleanup in that administrative code and in that tax ordinance that needs to be cleaned up. Some of those businesses may not even exist anymore. Like I know circuses coming to town, you know, whole host of businesses that do not operate in today's business model. So yes, there, there is a lot of cleanup that needs to be done. And we need to bring that to the voters to change the business license tax. And then we can also change and clean up some of these fees as well.
And, and one final question. I know we have, we up significantly the amplified sound license fee last year. Did we find, do you have any insight as to whether that affected, who purchases that? Is that generally a commercial application that, that people are purchasing that? Or because that went up significantly last year, is that affecting any residential permitting? I think of that because I know people get sick of me saying it, but I know we talk code compliance all the time. And one of our largest pieces of code compliance are sound complaints. So I wasn't sure if we had seen any changes to permitting as a result of that. And upon the answer of that, I know I got you that question out of left field, so I apologize. But I will, that's my last question for the fee schedule.
So as far as the impact to residents, I would have to look into that, Mayor Protem. For businesses, some of those fees are waived per council policy, depending on what the event is. Where a portion of the fee may be waived. But as far as the impact to residents, I would have to look into that.
Yeah, my, my concern, and we can look into this later, that by upping that, that we, people have just avoided that, that permit generally. And maybe with, that's one that we do the, the code cleanup might be another one that we need to, to sharpen our pencil on. That's all. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilman Nickel, I thought maybe earlier, did you want to say something or no?
Yeah, I was just going to ask Joe if he wanted to highlight anything or pull anything out to speak to the residents that they should be aware of. You know, I noticed that there was that a kind of annoying non-card member resident fee to swim at the plunge for a dollar and $2. And I see that that was removed. It's now free to swim at the plunge, even if you do not have a card for infants, seniors, and adults and youth. I, I'm not going to get into the minutia with you, but if there was anything specific that you saw as an outlier that you thought was worth mentioning, you know, I don't know how many people are actually watching right now, but now would be the time for you to say, hey, just a heads up. Like I saw for residential permit fees, plan check fee went up from $24 for something small, like a valuation of under $500. So if you're going to come in and get a permit for changing out a water heater, instead of it being $24, it's now going to be $90. You know, little things like that, you know?
Yeah, there, there is a handful of fees that, that were corrected because of either the way it was being calculated was incorrect or the calculation behind it, as far as, you know, staff time and allocation of hours has changed or it was not captured correctly last, during the last study. So probably the one that you mentioned would probably be the most significant one. Besides that, you know, the other fees, would it just increase by that 1.4% for the Consumer Price Index? No big changes. Our, our next complete comprehensive fee study will be done in 2022. And that's where we do, again, this whole deep dive and look at, you know, all the total costs of providing all the services. So there could be some big adjustments then. As, as far as what's being presented today, probably the one you mentioned would be the most significant adjustment.
I guess because my thought was everything, like going COVID and lots of plan checking things being done digitally now, could potentially streamline some of the actual man-hours that we charge. But I know in a lot of that, we're also putting in, you know, in the permit fee itself is, is having the inspector go out and actually check things. Do you know, and this may be a Sam Lee question, not a Joe Lilio question, but has there been any discussion out of planning building safety about potentially moving some of those small ticket items to just straight digital, pull the permit online, submit photos of the completed work and, and move on?
Yeah, I hope Sam Lee's on the call to address that. I know there have been some discussions behind the scenes on that, but Sam Lee would probably have to elaborate as far as what those discussions are.
All right, so while we're waiting for him to get on, my, my thought process there is just, you know, I'm sure if I asked all of us to be honest, who has pulled a permit to change a water heater or not pulled a permit to change a water heater, you know, I'm, I'm sure I'd see some smiling faces on this video. But it's little things like that, that if we make it really easy and really cheap, then the residents will be more likely to pull those permits and put it on our radar versus trying to circumnavigate City Hall. So I just, I saw that fee and I thought the only one that went up was for a building permit for a valuation under $500. Like that is the cheapest building permit possible. And we just hiked it by, you know, three times the, or almost four times the cost. So I just, it, it just for me made it more likely for those small jobs to not have permits.
So when, when we did the full cost allocation study two years ago, we put policies before City Council and City Council gave us direction, policy direction to full cost recovery, with the exception of certain recreational park services and library services. So that's the direction that we've continued here. We, we, we look at some of these fees and we're just following that direction as far as full cost recovery. You know, council always has the ability to circumvent that policy if that's so desired. I would not recommend that as a finance director. That's why you have the policy in place. We, you know, when we revisit the complete comprehensive fee study and the policy in two years from now, you know, I, I think that's a time to look at, you know, do you still want to have a 100% cost recovery policy or not? Again, that's the best business practice. It's something that we should have in place, but that is, again, ultimately up to City Council.
Yes, I guess I would just, I'm going to make this statement. I'm not speaking for council, but I'm going to speak for myself here. I would hope that all of our department heads, when looking at these fee schedules, if there's any of the fees that affect their departments specifically, if they think that those, the policy doesn't quite fit the actual pragmatic approach to what is being done, that they would bring it to our attention and pull it out as an outlier to potentially look at it through a different lens. Simply because, you know, one policy definitely does not fit all, all the time. Thank you, Joe. No more questions, Mr. Mayor.
If, if I can ask one, one further, is a follow-up to, to Councilmember Nickel. I, I think that part of that, Joe, it's not so much maybe the, the will to move away from total cost recovery. It's just making sure that departments are looking at how much time does it do to do this? You know, the, the amount of time it takes to evaluate a, a small residential permit under $500, are we adequately capturing that? And are we inadvertently disincentivizing the permit process? Because a part of this is we want people to pull permits. We want, whether it's amplified sound and the question I was asking, or changing out a water heater, we, we want those things incented to do so. And I think that, that doesn't necessarily, that is not necessarily in opposition to total cost recovery. I, I have a question though, on the end of that is if there are items to this that need to go to the voters first, because if these things are inextricably tied to our business license and, and tax pieces, if some of those fees are, there's items that we are obligated to go to the voters in California to affect. We should make sure that we, in 2022, have those things synchronized, that items we want to go to the voters and say, look, we want to stop taxing fortune tellers and circuses in El Segundo, but we need you to vote on this. Let's make sure that we do that and then immediately follow that with our fee schedule, deep dive, just so that we can accomplish those cleanups at once, would be my recommendation. So do, do you know, do we need to do that? So I guess the follow, do we need to do that?
Yes, that, that, that is definitely my recommendation that we bring something to the ballot in, I guess it would be March of 2020, if that's when the election is. It could be based on state's action. They could change that to June 2020, but, so, I'm sorry, 2022. So it'd either be March 2022 or June 2022, the next general election for the city. Again, I would recommend bringing the business license tax and any other items that council so desires to the ballot.
City manager, they, they could, maybe we could put a tie, a string around our fingers so we make sure that we start programming that. Because if it's a ballot in 2022, we need to start working on that sometime and budget for that in 2021 to make sure we've got our, if we do so want to stop taxing circuses, we make sure we have that allocated.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, we'll put that on the council agenda forecast and we'll be keeping an eye on that as suggested.
Okay, any further questions or comments?
Our Planning Director Sam Lee is available if you want him to talk, to address the, that issue about permits. Maybe you moved past that. Just wanted to let you know he's available.
Anyone have a question?
Not necessary. I think when we start talking about the online permitting system, we'll get deeper into that. Maybe we can discuss that then.
But I, I do know, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, during the, because of the COVID-19, more and more permits have been done online and will continue to do so. So we're moving in that direction anyhow.
Great. I don't see anyone else. Okay, I think we're good. All right, public hearing is now open for public input. Madam Deputy City Clerk Schilling, is there anyone in chamber wishing to speak regarding the public hearing?
She may be helping Matt get on, so.
Okay. Do you want me to poke my head out there?
No, I believe if there was somebody there knowing Mona, she would be online to let you know.
Okay. Madam Clerk, have you received any written public comments as it relates to this?
There's no.
Thank you, Ms. Schilling. Okay. And have you received any written public comments on this matter?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, state in your last name, council members, please. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Pimentel, so moved.
Jeru, second.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Drew?
Aye.
Councilmember Nicol?
Aye.
Councilmember Perstak?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Pimentel?
Aye.
Mayor Boiles?
Yes.
Okay, you are closed.
Okay, and I don't think there's any more council discussions. City Attorney will read the resolution by title only. Wait. Yeah.
That's correct.
Yes.
Mayor and council, a resolution in the city of El Segundo established a schedule of fees and charges for recovering costs incurred from providing very various city services ready for adoption. You're on mute, Mayor.
Oh, sorry about that. Who would like to adopt the resolution?
This is so, this needs a first, a first and a second and a vote.
Okay. Nicol first.
Okay.
Second.
All right, Madam Clerk, vote please.
Councilmember Drew?
Aye.
Councilmember Nicol?
Aye.
Councilmember Perstak?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Pimentel?
Aye.
And Mayor Boiles?
Yes.
All right, resolution passes by vote.
Thank you. I have six, yes.
To let you know, um, uh, Matthew is in.
Oh, great. Okay. We're gonna go back to that one then. All right, so we're back to, what item was that? Item eight, presentation of investment portfolio report for June 2020. And our city treasurer, Matt Robinson, and Dino Marsaki, deputy city treasurer, should be on, at least one of them.
Okay. I let Mr. Robinson in, but now I do not see him. So I guess I lied to you, so maybe go to number six?
Okay, might be a while for him now. All right.
I apologize, I let him in, but I do not see that he is on here.
That's okay. All right. Uh, item six, adopt resolution approving the proposed fiscal year 2020, 2021 operating budget, capital improvement program budget, and GAN appropriations limit. And uh, we also have public comments on that, but we'll get to that later. Uh, so this is a time and place here to fix for a public hearing related to the matter I just described. City Clerk was proper notice of the hearing given in a timely manner.
Yes, it was.
Have you received any written communication regarding this matter?
We have.
Okay. Do you wanna review it or have we received it?
Do you, well, it came in the form of public communications, so I guess you could say, no, we didn't receive anything formally, but I will be reading during public communications, five, five, five short um, emails.
Great, thank you. All right, um, Mr. Mitnick, public hearing is now open. Who will make the presentation? I assume it's Mr. Lilio.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, members of the council, we're gonna do a tag team.
Okay.
Getting a two-for-one deal tonight.
Great.
Um, and uh, hey, before I, I get started, I, I do want to acknowledge and thank Rod Spackman for, for his service uh, to the, the community and um, he made El Segundo a better place for everybody. So Rod, if you're still watching, uh, uh, thank you, appreciate that. Okay, um, jumping into the presentation, we have a, a few slides to go through. And as I mentioned, it'll be a tag team between the city manager and the finance director. So uh, we do have an agenda. And uh, here's how it'll play out. So we'll start out with an overview that I'm doing right now. Give a little bit of background, and then we're going to talk about the economic recovery scenarios that have been in front of the council before. From there, we're gonna do a, a brief overview of, of the citywide budget for all funds. And, and Joe will do items three through eight, and Joe will walk you through the general fund revenues and appropriations. From there, he'll go into the special revenue funds, enterprise funds, internal service funds, and the capital improvement program. After that, we'll discuss a variety of other topics, including pensions, OPEB, and then I will spend some time talking about future challenges, budget balancing tools uh, for the future of need be, and future opportunities. And uh, hit on the long-term financial strategic plan that we're working on, and then talk about the next budget steps uh, for the, the next budget year. And there'll be plenty of time for an opportunity for questions. Okay, with that, so let me get into the background piece. Just as a reminder to the council and those who are, are watching, uh, we are shifting our, the city's fiscal year, we're one of the last cities left in California that operates on a federal calendar, October 1 through September 30th, so that will switch to a more traditional July 1, June 30th calendar. So to do that, there's some logistical challenges, so the next fiscal year, which will start on October 1, will be nine months, it will conclude on June 30th. Um, and as a result of that, you can tell everybody how much you cut the budget, because the budget will be a little bit leaner um, as a result of that. And then in the subsequent fiscal year 21, 22, that'll be a 12-month fiscal year starting on July 1st of 2021, going into June 30th of 2022. So, so council, as you know uh, fully, this has been perhaps one of the most challenging years in the city's history. Not unique to El Segundo, this uh, cities up and down the state are, are having the same discussion. So we, we had two state of emergencies over a prolonged period of time to deal with. One is uh, COVID-19, the pandemic. And the other has to do with the uh, civil unrest and the protests uh, that have taken place. We've had a number of protests here in, in El Segundo. So uh, no matter what your views are on these two subjects, they've had a significant impact on our local economy, which has had a significant impact on our revenues, which has impacted our ability to deliver services to the community. So without going into uh, more detail, that has been our, our biggest hurdle. And I do wanna say, council, as you recall, this city was riding high up through um, February. Our economy was cranking, revenues were coming in higher than anticipated. It was a very exciting and dynamic time. We were gearing up to do some significant capital improvement projects and just uh, really, really excel. And then we got hampered. It's, but that is proof that we have a solid foundation for the future, once the economy comes back. So uh, that was the underlying challenge for us. The next slide. So city council, uh, city employees and members of the public, uh, we come to you tonight with the budget hearing, not without having laid incredible groundwork to get here. Not without having spent many hours in front of city council. Here are just some, or here are the public um, sessions that we've had. That um, we had a closed session on April 21st, uh, with the council to, uh, as part of the um, dealing with the pandemic, we, we did provide um, some uh, financial background and an update, uh, what was going on at that time. There was a lot of uncertainty. We had a public discussion with a mid-year budget update on, on May 5th, uh, for the, the fiscal year that's ending. A lot of time there, we did a strategic plan update on July 22nd. That's common. Before we get into the uh, budget for the upcoming year, we, we take the strategic plan to council and we seek your guidance if you wanna make any revisions, and, and you did make some uh, minor adjustments to that. And then on August 5th, we had a budget study session, or the document that's in front of you today. And, and what's in front of you reflects that study session. Right after that, uh, we were in front of you with the water and wastewater rates study session with our, our consultant. Now, we're not recommending uh, water and wastewater rate adjustments at this time. Uh, those will likely come later. And we'll be back in, in front of you shortly, uh, with some follow-up reports on that. So here we are at the public hearing, September 15th. So that's one, two, three, four, five, six, we're in our sixth um, item, and then the budget will commence on October 1st. What this slide doesn't show you are the numerous meetings we've had at the staff level internally. The next slide, Joe. Just as a reminder, the economic recovery scenarios that we've had in front of you, scenario one, two, and three, these are based on, um, they go back to, to May 5th. These are based on, actually, they go back to April, uh, anticipated uh, peaks in the virus and then when the recovery starts. We were in the scenario one, um, such a, a scenario, said that twice, uh, where it was anticipated that the virus would peak in May and then we'd start recovery in July. And we were starting a recovery and then we got a sort of a, a hammer and, and we stalled out. And now we're in, moving into scenario two, which anticipates the virus peaking, or it is peaking about maybe recently, a couple of weeks ago to now. And we're anticipating the recovery, um, really starting in earnest in, in October, maybe a little bit later. We're not yet in scenario three, where the recovery doesn't really start until the beginning of the calendar year in January. And we had some numbers that showed what the impacts were and so on. Um, we'll go to the next slide. So the strategic plan, don't worry, council, I'm not gonna read through each of these items. You have 10 top, or you had, you had nine, nine top priorities, you added one. So priorities one through five is to, when you hit on the screen, they don't change. Council added a 10th priority. I like that, instead of having a top nine list, now you have a top 10 list. And that 10th priority that was added is to ensure that the city is positioned for post-COVID-19 recovery. Next slide shows your top five broad goals. Goals two through five stayed the same, and you added to your broad goal number one, which read before, enhance customer service engagement and communication. You see on this slide, in the yellow um, highlight, the words embrace diversity, equity, inclusion were added. So you're conveying to the community your commitment to diversity, uh, and uh, the DEI committee that's, that's moving forward. So that's reflected in your broad goals. We go to the next slide. Now I'm gonna hand off to Joe, and Joe will walk you through the, the different um, budget slides, starting with the overall city budget. The page in front of you shows us a snapshot of the budget for the next nine months for all funds. So I'm handing off to Joe. Thank you, council.
Oh, as Scott uh, just said, you know, we are going to a nine-month budget for 2021. So when we're comparing it to the previous year's budget, a 12-month cycle, that, you know, we're not exactly comparing apples with apples. Uh, but we did put it there for a comparison. Um, so the total proposed appropriations for all funds for uh, 2020, 2021 is $119,598,827. The top three appropriation categories uh, consume about 82.4% of the total citywide budget. These top categories are the general fund, um, with about uh, 49.4% or $59 million. The enterprise funds, uh, which are the water, wastewater, golf, and solid waste funds, uh, they make up about 23.2% of the budget. And then followed by the internal service funds, which would be the equipment replacement, workers' compensation fund, and general liability fund. This makes up about 9.8% of the total citywide budget. So uh, please, if, if city council has any questions uh, on any of these slides, uh, feel free to ask me. So general fund revenues, uh, the proposed, the proposed 2020, 2021 general fund revenues total $59,51,732. This does reflect scenario two economic impacts to the city's general uh, fund revenue. So we are, are anticipating uh, a, a slow pickup in the economy beginning in January. And again, slowly uh, picking up as we get through the end of the fiscal year. No way are, are we saying that's gonna be back to normal pre-COVID? That's not what we're saying by any means. Um, so we did take a very conservative approach uh, with each of these uh, uh, revenue streams. And when we went to council back in May for the mid-year uh, revision, um, that approach uh, uh, was almost spot-on. We're, we're gonna be very, very close to what we said uh, back in May, or uh, where we're gonna be ending this current year, September 30th. Um, using those same tools and techniques and trends, we developed uh, the revenues for uh, 2020, 21. So again, a very conservative approach, but a- as we all know, there still is some uncertainty with um, recovery. So we do have that economic uh, scenario three that we will revisit if we need to during mid-year uh, next year. So the top four revenue cer- sources are the business license tax, the property tax, sales tax, and TLT. Uh, these equal about 61% of the general fund revenues. Uh, TLT, which was the top revenue source, beginning in fiscal year 2016, 17, um, now uh, and, and through 2019, 20 is now number four. This next slide uh, reflects that. Um, so hopefully the colors.
Real quick, Joe, sorry, if you go back one slide, this slide in years past, do you happen to know off the top of your head what percentage property tax was of that pie? It was not double digits.
But yeah, the property tax, uh, if I can go through this next slide to kinda show you, um, so the property tax is this blue line. Um, so it's always been studied. It's, it's been approximately the number four source. Um, so I wanna say close to 10%. Uh, so if we look uh, back here at 15, 16, 16, 17, right around seven, maybe uh, just a little bit over 7 million. Uh, so that would have been close to nine or 10% of, of the total revenues.
Uh, if I can interject, Jack, Joe, looking at the budget book from last year, it was 12% last year.
Okay, any other questions on these slides? Okay. Uh, one, one thing I do wanna point out here, um, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, the TLT, um, 2016, 17, uh, due to measure B passing, so that brought the TLT rate from 8% to 12%. Um, thus uh, bringing TLT up to the number one revenue source. And we were seeing hotels coming online, uh, extra beds coming online. So we saw that increase going up to um, almost 15 million. Now, due to COVID and the economic uh, conditions that we're in, a, a steep decline. So the TLT is very sensitive uh, to economic uh, conditions. Uh, most of our revenue sources are, but the property tax, uh, you can see this blue line right here in the middle, very steady. In fact, increasing for next year due to total uh, assessments, property assessments in the city, increasing uh, per the LA County Assessors Office. So this next slide is the general, the proposed general fund expenditures. Again, total link, 59,51,732, so uh, balanced budget. Uh, each department's budget is represented here. Um, if there's any specific questions, uh, I'd be happy to address them, otherwise I'll move on to the next slide.
Joe, just a quick question. For the largest departments, police, fire, public works, as a percentage of overall general fund, are they pretty much the same? It's hard to tell with the 12 to nine-month shift.
Um, so we have, if we just like a public safety, which is combining police and fire, uh, that's coming in at about $30.9 million. So that's approximately almost, um, I'm sorry, Mayor, hold on one second. So that's approximately 53% uh, of the total general fund, which has been consistent. We've been writing a low 50% for public safety.
Okay, that was what I was trying to get at. Thank you.
Uh, any other question? Question on my end, does that, does that align broadly with our peers in the South Bay for what percentage they're spending?
Uh, you know, that, that's gonna vary by agency. Not all agencies are full service. Um, agencies that are full service, um, in my experience, I mean, I, I have not uh, looked at um, and compared that, so I, I don't have uh, exact answer for you, Mayor Potem. However, in my experience, full-service cities typically, the public safety component is gonna be anywhere from 50 to 65% of the total general fund budget. And that, that's just normal for uh, full-service agencies.
Uh, do, do these number, well, I guess these are broken out somewhat separately. Do the extra workman's comp pieces and litigation factor into these? Are the, are they weighing in extra on the budget than these numbers? Or are they capsulated? I, I know they're broken out separately, but how do those impact this in terms of the total cost of providing uh, police and fire?
So a- anytime um, uh, litigation or workers' comp claims are paid out, they're paid out through the uh, um, internal service funds. So we have a workers' comp internal service fund. Uh, and, and if, if, if I can just go back real quick to the, one slide that reflects it here. So if we look at item number seven, right here, workers' compensation, um, so that $2.5, $2.6 million is, one, our, our our fee for the insurance, the annual insurance cost of premium, plus uh, claims. So claims are captured here, but they're also charged back to the departments. So claims are captured here, but they're also charged back to the departments. So the answer to your question, if we go back now to this slide. The claims are captured, any claims paid out for police, fire or public works. Or any of those departments, they're captured here within the departments are charged back. However, litigation costs are not. So those are kind of all lumped together right now. And they're not necessarily, they're charged back to the general fund in whole, but not to specific departments.
So those workman's copies are charged back in there. And if if we have a paying out. A retiree workman complaint claim with separated officer or or firefighters comp claim, are those also recharged to that department?
So the way we do it is we look at the previous year's experience. And we assign a rate to each position. So police officers have a certain, certain workers' comp rate based on the prior year's claims. And and so on, each position has their own rate based on the prior year's claims. So the claims that will experience in in twenty twenty one will be paid out in the workers' comp fund. Based and and they'll be charged to each department based on the prior year's experience and we readjust each year, if that makes sense. So it's not, the claim is not exactly charged back in the same year that it it incurs. We do it through an experience level over time.
And so that that two and a half million dollars, it's being charged back. Is is that that stays pretty constant? I mean, that's four percent of our general fund we're allocating for those claims.
It it is, it's ticked up the last several years slightly, but it's been consistent, I would say, the last three years.
I know, I know both, we've put some budgetary math to 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 wellness and things. Is that impacting? The 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 relative percent of separating. Safety workers who are who are making these claims or we, or do we have an idea of how many, what percent? We need to factor in. When I look at that trend line for spend, do we need to be factoring on more than that? Or or is there a chance we're bending that curve down?
Yeah, we we would have to look at, so what you're referring to is new claims. Does that impact?
New claims, yeah.
New claims. And and the problem by looking at that two and a half million dollars. That doesn't necessarily reflect new claims. That reflects existing claims and some percentage of new claims factored in. So when someone does file for workers' comp, that could be on the books for many, many years as you probably are aware. So those payments are are not just new claims, they're also existing claims.
Well, it it trend wise, should we be expecting half of our officers to make these, one in every four, one in every three? Because we're fully staffed for the first time in eons. So should we be expecting seventy five percent? What what can we look at as we look at, and we've got a sixteen year nugget that this council is looking at. Dealing with with a structural inversion on our budget. Do we have a sense on where these fall out?
And Mayor Protim, that's why in the budget, you'll see in the subsequent slide, we're requesting for a risk manager position. To proactively manage the entire risk portfolio specifically to focusing on workers' compensation. So unfortunately, I don't have an answer for you tonight on that, but I can definitely get back to you on your, on your question.
I think, I think the mayor protests, it would be nice to to maybe have this come up on a future council meeting so that we can kind of. Understand what we can do. I know you went out to bid recently with the R C M A or whatever to look at other options, but. It it is something we should pay some attention to. Chris, are you okay to move on?
Yeah, we've got our our workman's comp sort of task force, but I just, I I want to make sure that when the public looks at this and sees, you know, we invest in public safety. And rightly so, but the cost of that should not be obscured. It's not just salaries and medical. There is, we are attaching a significant. Long term, ongoing interaction responsibility for people's health. And part of that needs to be reflected in this. When people say, we want a fully staffed police department at X level, we need to make sure they know that's not. You know, you're not getting someone for twenty five years. You know, you're you're getting someone for fifty years. And that's important to annotate the cost for that as we do this budgeting piece, but I'm happy to move on.
No, actually, Chris, I mean, we brought this up a while ago, a couple meetings back where he said, we need to better illustrate to the public. What, not only what our staffing levels are and what our crime rates are, but also a better kind of picture of. Where does your dollar go? So that people understand the breakdown, because to your point, Mayor Protim, I don't think the average resident in El Segundo. Fully understands what it costs to have our own police and fire in town, especially when we start making these difficult decisions if. God forbid, we get to the point where at midyear, we're not where we need to be. Because this thing is protracted more so than we expected, then we're going to have to make some really uncomfortable, unpopular decisions. And I think it's going to be really incumbent upon us to explain to the El Segundo public. How our system works and where the dollar goes, even worse than we have last few years. So point taken.
And Joe, also before you go on, can you just clarify for the public? I know we have some new descriptions up there like development services. And community services, community services is the combination of the library and the parks and wrecks. And development services is the planning department, correct?
Yes.
We're going to get to that.
I know, but we have a slide up here that shows, you know, dollar figures. They want to make sure that the community understands. What those categories are.
Right, so line item number four, community services, that is library and recreation and park. Departments combined. And then line item number six, development services is the renaming of planning and building safety. Any other questions on this slide?
Can you, can you explain really quickly what goes into the city council budget? Because if I'm looking at that on on general public, I think, well, it's five of them, simple math, because you're getting paid pretty well for a part time gig.
Right, so it it's, and forgiving mayor, I I don't know what the monthly stipend is for council members. I know it's very low.
Nine hundred and eighty dollars, I believe.
Yes. So obviously, that's not what makes up that budget. It's this component of it, but a very small component. We do have a full time staff member that's charged that city council budget. We also have. Several memberships that are charged here, so like to leave California cities and some other very vital and crucial memberships to cog. That have huge benefits to belonging to those special.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Appreciate that. Don't want to take too much time, but I appreciate that.
All right, so for twenty 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 one. We did start the development of this budget several months ago. And as we progressed and really started doing a lot of analysis. It looked like we were coming in with a a projected shortfall, not projected shortfall. It was about five point eight million dollars. So the measures that were taken to balance the budget. Were twenty full time positions frozen, that equals about two point four million dollars in savings. Fifteen percent reduction in operations and maintenance, that was about two point one million dollars in savings. Use of economic uncertainty reserves for C I P projects, that's about nine hundred and twenty four thousand dollars. So we do have one million, two hundred and fifty thousand that were transferring out of the general fund to the C I P projects. And I thought one million, two fifty nine twenty three is being funded by the economic uncertainty reserves. And then the twenty five percent reduction in the equipment replacement funding. Which that's equivalent to about three hundred and eighty four thousand dollars. Any questions on this slide? The proposed frozen positions. And again, what I did here is we have the departments. And the first column authorized positions, so. These are still authorized positions and we're just showing that due to vacancies. Time to recruit that we know these are going to be, you know, not filled for twenty twenty one. Again, this is a nine month cycle. So for police, we have a total of six positions. Four of which are sworn to our non sworn civilian positions. Five positions within public works, four within the community services department. Two within fire. One within development services, one within finance and one within human resources. And and as we progress and get to midyear, which is going to be four and a half months into the budget, so this would be. This would be mid February. We'll have a good idea of exactly where we are, if if, you know, we have even further vacancies and. Or positions that we need to fill that we thought we could leave vacant, and we can address that then. We know we have been running for the last several years consistently at about thirty vacant positions. So while personnel costs make up approximately eighty percent of the total general fund budget, then the other twenty percent is the O N M. This graph represents the breakdown of the personnel cost, so. Sales being the biggest chunk of that, fifty seven percent, Calpers pension retirement being the next largest percentage of personnel costs. And the rest of the costs broken down. And I'm going to turn it back over to Scott now.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, members of the council now will will provide a little more clarity on the. Reorganization of some of the departments. So the community services department. That consists of what used to be the library and recreation and park departments. And there's some movement of job titles and so on. For example, within the library component. A senior library librarian position will be reclassified as city librarian. A library one will be classified as an arts and culture specialist. The parks and landscaping function that was in parks and rec, or sorry, rec and park, excuse me, that will move over to the public works department. That provides for a lot of synergies and efficiencies. So all the employees at the corporation yard or the city service center. That they'll all be together under one, in one unit, if you will. And then Park Vista Senior Housing, the oversight of that will move over to Development Services. We go to the next slide. Speaking of Development Services, so that is a rename, what was formerly the planning and building. So planning and building safety, P B S, that'll be renamed Development Services. This is becoming more common in in the industry. Some cities use community service or community development department, but a more. Evolving or rising trend is to be a Development Services Department. And there will also be a, within this department, a new division entitled the Housing Division with two components. One being affordable housing, now that we we have funds in an affordable housing fund and we'll likely see more of that. And there is a bigger push to actually produce affordable housing units. So that'll be reflected in a affordable housing. Program or section of the Housing Division, and then a senior housing section will be established with the Park Vista Senior. Housing project under that. Finance Department, this will include bringing in the City Treasurer's Office. To be a component of the Finance Department. This is becoming quite common in California. This will allow for operational efficiencies and the the city, the city treasurer. Who hopefully is online now and be able to give his presentation on the investments later. He has been fully, he's fully in support of this and it's part of the effort. The the Business Services Manager, Dino's position will has been, will be reclassified into a treasury and customer services manager. Position. And we're talking a lot about workers' comp earlier to beef up that operation. We're going to consolidate the risk management function. So we have what was in, part of it was in H R before. Now it'll all be in finance. The workers' comp fund is seventy five percent and the general liability fund is twenty five percent of the action. It'll, we'll have a new newly established position. This is a new position, a risk manager position. This position will be fully paid for through greater efficiencies and savings. And the Finance Director is is ready if you need to explain that. So thi- this is a new position in the budget. But given our exposure on the liability and workers' comp side, we have to do a much better job for the council and the community. And we we feel strongly that this will do it. If we don't deliver and we don't show that at savings. Then we can unwind the the function if we have to. Okay, let's go to the next one. I T, this is a name change only up until the end of this month. It will be the Information Services Department. It will change to that of Information Technology Services. That's just a name change. Next, Public Works, as I mentioned earlier, where we will be rolling in parks and landscaping. Into this department. That concludes the restructuring. No change from what we shared with you back in on August fifth. It's exactly as we we articulated then. Okay, now I'm going to turn it over to to Joe and he will talk to you about general fund reserve strategy.
So council's policy is twenty percent general fund reserve target. So for twenty twenty one, we're suggesting to leave that at twenty percent. Twenty one, twenty two, we'd recommend twenty percent as well. Increasing that to twenty five percent for subsequent years. I'll see that's a policy discussion that's, it'll be up to city council. But having stronger reserves, many agencies in our, in our, in the South Bay area. Have north of twenty five percent reserves, just due to, you know, the many uncertainties that we've been facing over the last decade or so. It is, I think, good business practice. As well as Jeff Way recommends, you know, having strong reserves. The minimum level would be sixteen point six percent. That's bare bones minimum. Twenty percent. Is where we're at, twenty five percent would really be equivalent to three months of reserves, which is not a lot. So that's one way of looking at it, is how many months of reserves do you have on hand? And moving to twenty five percent would bring us to three months of reserves. Economic Uncertainty Fund Reserve for twenty twenty one. Is going to be at one million, seventy six thousand, two ninety two, and that's because we are utilizing. Just over nine hundred and twenty three thousand of that for to cover C I P. We're recommending to increase that back to two million in subsequent years. Special Revenue Funds, so they total eleven point one million dollars. And and I I have to apologize, there's a typo here, says two point two million in capital improvement projects. That should read five point nine million in capital improvement projects from the special revenue funds. And I'm going to turn it back over to Scott to go over the Cultural Development Fund.
Now, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this is for page sixty in the agenda packet or page Roman numeral twelve in the. City Manager's Budget Message from the Proposed Budget Document. So we're going to spend a little bit of time on this because this is a new fund. The city council, within the last year, approved setting up a one percent. Fee on development for the arts, if you will, or technically more more accurately, the Cultural Development. Program, C D P. So when a development takes place over a certain threshold. The developer has the option to produce an art project on the site or to contribute one percent into this fund. And despite having COVID nineteen and all the challenges associated with that. Four hundred eighty six thousand dollars roughly has been collected to to date early on. That that's a healthy sign. And so with that that money available. There's a recommendation as to how to appropriate that. I would like to stress for the council and the viewers. This is with respect to the money already collected. More money will come in during the fiscal year. And staff will be back in front of council with with a recommendation, actually based on the. Arts and Culture Committee, they will make a recommendation. So what you have in front of you is a recommendation from the Arts and Culture Committee. I I would like to stress for council, this is a compromise recommendation by this committee at council's. Direction. I did attend their last meeting with Melissa McCollum, our. Soon to be a Community Services Director, and we had a very good discussion and there was a lot of give and take. And so you have a compromise proposal in front of you. I'll go over that. There's four components to it. It's recommended that two hundred thousand dollars be appropriated to help. Fund the city gateway entry project. The project will cost more than this. There's another hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Available for that project, which this would allow three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be available. Hopefully, that'll be enough, might be more, that will be needed. The next item is a recommendation to put in a hundred thousand dollars for the library park activation. This project will likely cost two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So there there's additional money available to do that. Another source. And then item three is the downtown art and beautification effort. A hundred thousand dollars is being recommended to help. Do more art in the downtown area. And there was, there was some talk about helping with the parklets and even to spruce up some of the the temporary barricades. That are in the downtown and again. that are in the downtown. And again, this is more like seed money to get that effort started. Then the remaining eighty six thousand dollars is recommended to go into a holding account right now and to have that split more or less evenly between cultural arts projects and and programming. Now, this would be at the discretion with the city manager's authorization to do projects as requested by the Arts and Culture Committee. This was a compromise here because the committee feels strongly that cultural arts projects and programming should still take place. So this is a a good way to to get started and to prove start being successful with with these endeavors. So that's what's in front of council. This is the first phase. We're very optimistic that you're going to see more funding and more exciting projects down the road. And if there's questions, like you do have your community services director and myself available if you have questions.
City manager, this Chris Pimentel, one question on this, but two, actually, is the proportions for a split on things like the gateway art, that that two to one split, two dollars from this fund for one dollar from the general fund, is that a a new differentiation? Or did we consider using it in a, you know, a three to one or can you just walk through the methodology on that?
I think that was, hold on. And if Melissa's here, she can chime in too. I believe that was a compromise. We were the staff level recommending a little bit more for that. It's it's I don't think there's a specific formula. I think it was a way to allocate money to help get these projects moving. I will share with you it. The gateway project is really important, and my recommendation to council is if we do that project, let's do it right. Do it well and not compromise on that because that's going to be a real showpiece for the community and to make the community proud of their main entryway, but also to serve as what's the right word, to inspiration for private, the private developers to put more money into this fund versus doing projects on their own.
I would agree wholeheartedly. And and I would further that with saying that the ability for the cultural development fund to put in a piece of stunning very monumental architecture on that entryway is one of the ways and reasons that this fund was approved. So the idea of splitting some of these things in a two to one ratio versus turning this over to this fund entirely is something that I I if it were me, I would advocate this fund allocating more money to that. There is room for programming of these things. We want all of those things to occur. But this fund will continue to flesh out. There does not seem to be a lack of appetite for development to come to El Segundo, to come to El Segundo in a large way and a willingness to fund this. And I think this could be a piece that shows to your point, the exact return on investment that a developer gets by funding this cultural development piece. I would, I would, though I don't want us to 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 take a a sharp pencil to the math on this. But as this thing takes shape, I would, I would wholeheartedly endorse taking as much money from the cultural development fund as it takes to build that piece of architecture. They met at the sack, but I know my beloved parklets are a long time coming. And with the COVID temporary architecture, they seem to be never in the offing. But if that money from item three moves into item one on this, I would endorse it.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in fairness, understood. And and that, as your city manager, I would totally support that. But in fairness to the committee, their perspective is that the 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 projects that they're recommending and the spending they're recommended, that was part of the program when it was set up. When the program was set up, it was not envisioned to be subsidizing or I shouldn't use that word, to pay for gateway projects. So they feel very passionate about that. So this is a compromise. But for all sides here, I'd like to just stress and point out, this is with respect to the money already in the kitty. More money will be coming in during the year. That additional money can be used, if need be, to augment the gateway project and or augment the other projects that the committee would would like to do. So this is a great compromise. And you know how you can tell when there's a good compromise? When everybody feels a little bit unhappy. So I just wanted to point that out because the committee is not on the call here. I just wanted to let you know. They they feel strongly about these other pieces. At the end of the day, it's your call, council. Thank you.
That's the council member Drew is coming.
Yeah, okay, on this, I I think this kind of goes back to what we talked about at the last council meeting that I think there has to be more of an understanding on what the expectation is of us, of these committees and vice versa. Because I think, again, the sticking point is always going to be this fund, from my understanding, was to be tangible, to be able to see what the one percent investment would produce as far as something tangible. And I think that's when I understand when you get down to the this holding account, when I see cultural arts projects and programming, is that something tangible? You know, are we are we going to be able to see that? Will the community be able to see that? I completely understand where they're coming from. But we also have to consider the the individual companies that are paying into this fund. And if we want them to continue to pay into this fund, I think it's important that they see where the money is going. So I I think it's important to get some wins first before we start worrying about the balance of it. That's just my opinion.
It is a point of annoying order on that as well. Look, though, we know that art doesn't always have to be statues and things and and programming is a part of it. And as much as I would love to not be on the hook for anything that gets weird, I would say city manager, in the in the stipulation is this past, the city council does approve the art. So it's unlike a a contract piece for infrastructure. I believe unless unless I'm wrong, I believe that this this measure, when put through, we, for better or worse, have the final say on on what program we do engage with. And when we schedule those meetings, I will make sure that I am stuck in the Grand Canyon somewhere without reception. So I don't have to be part of them. But I think that 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 in terms of holding account, I I believe we we can't, I don't think we give you the keys on that, though I may be wrong. I would be happy to be correct.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as I understand it, and Melissa, feel free to chime in. It does come through council, but ultimately, there may be a approval process put in place that that can take the council out of that. So it's a little more, less political. I've been in organizations that have gone through that with an art and public places process, so that the council's not the decision maker on what is art and what isn't. But that that's an issue that can be dealt with a little bit later on. But initially, you will be approving the gateway project and some of these other projects. So that that's correct.
Council member nickel.
Chris, I'm not going to let you stand alone on that one. At all. I think the gateway project is very important. I think that the Arts and Culture Committee did the best that they could do with the money that they have so far. It was discussed that, yes, there are other projects in in the pipeline that could produce, you know, more money to this fund, and they would then have more money to allocate or to make recommendations to us to ultimately decide what to do with. But the buck does stop here. And ultimately, we were elected by the residents of El Segundo to make these tough decisions and to, you know, take the bullets from the firing squad when they come. And I I think the gateway project is something that is beyond very important. It's paramount. You know, that that entry to town has been, it's just, it's sad, you know, it's just sad. And anyone who has any concept of where two hundred thousand dollars can go with public funds and prevailing wages, it's not going to get us much. And, you know, I would be I would be able to support Mayor Proten Pimentel's concept of moving the downtown art beautification hundred thousand to the city gateway entry project for now. You know, with the idea that, you know, another hundred thousand should come and that downtown and the money could then be put back into the downtown. You know, we've seen this library park activation. It was presented and it's it's fantastic. And so I wouldn't want to take from that. I think that that's going to be something that the the community can really appreciate. But to echo a bit of council member Jeru's sentiment, which is the companies have paid into this. You know, they're investing in our community and therefore this money has been put back to us, say, hey, how are you going to continue to invest in this community and add, you know, public art or just, you know, beautify, beautify the the community? Now, we're not paving streets with this, but the the gateway is something that I think is very important. It's been a long time coming. And so I can get behind three hundred thousand for the gateway project, one hundred thousand for library park activation, and then keeping that eighty six thousand in their holding account because the cultural arts projects and programming is very near and dear to their hearts. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. All right, Councilor Drew, Councilor Prustak, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm going to also concur. I mean, I know I expressed this when we first saw this budget that the gateway project has to be the number one priority and that we really need to put the money behind it to make it as to make it the best project as possible. So I'm going to concur that the hundred thousand dollars should go into the gateway project. I also don't think that they need eighty six thousand in a holding account, maybe half that or three fourths of that. You know, we have the money now, so let's make sure that that gateway project comes is developed as best as possible. And then, you know, because we have we have other gateways. So I mean, we're talking right now on the the Imperial and Main entrance, but we have other gateways. You know, we have gateways coming into town as well, like on the El Segundo, El Segundo Boulevard side. So I just, you know, we do want to ensure that the companies that are putting their money toward this see a benefit to the to benefit for their donation.
Okay, well, it sounds like there's consensus on that regard. I got a quick question, Scott or somebody. How many, how many new developments have opted to do their own art? What percent? Because that was one of the carve outs I'd asked for because I just, yeah, yeah, a huge fan of this program, frankly.
I don't have that at my fingertips. Melissa, do you?
Most of those, yeah.
I do have it, Scott. So far, twenty five percent have decided to do onsite art and seventy five percent have paid into the fund.
Wow, that's surprising me, but at least, okay, people are taking advantage of the option. That's great. Thank you. Thanks. Appreciate that. Okay, so Scott, I think you have consensus, though, from at least three council members on directing more funds towards the gateway entry project. Do you need anything more from us on that?
Well, so if you could, so for budget purposes, I need to know what it is. And I I also like council to remind or clarify on October twentieth, the Arts and Cultural Committee will be in front of you with seeking direction on the holding account. So and and we're also going to come back to you with more clarity on the the gateway project. So could I want to make sure you have my notes right? On the gateway entry project, how much do you would you like to go to that?
I heard a hundred thousand from downtown art and beautification is what Scott was proposing, which is summarizing what Chris had said, moving that towards the city gateway for three hundred thousand. Is it? Did I get that right?
Okay, so downtown.
I agree with that, yes.
Okay, I think Carol said yes to that one, too.
So the down beautification becomes zero.
And then, well, unless they want to move some of the holding account into the downtown beautification.
The the holding accounts is really important to the to the group.
Can I interject real quick? Sorry. Melissa just said seventy five percent of, from what I understand from previous meeting, was about a billion dollars worth of development. Is that about right? Is that my is my math correct there? Okay, so seventy five percent of those projects all right, have paid into this fund. So while it might be a short term loss for what the committee wants, if you take a broader view of this, this is going to be a much bigger budget going forward to get things accomplished. It seems to me that the number one thing everybody wants to get done is you want to get that gateway project done. So let's finance it and get it done. And then you're going to have seemingly a more than sufficient enough money coming into this fund to take care of things that you want to do as you go forward. So I just think we need to take a little broader view of that from from the committee's position.
Thanks, Rob, I can hear it. Yeah, okay, Chris, I I agree too. I think we got to have some something tangible. I absolutely concur. So and I do believe that, given what's happening in El Segundo, despite COVID, we're going to see many more funds coming through. Councilman Nickel.
And, you know, to that point, too, if we set this committee loose on really digging into the gateway project, working with, you know, the 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 person that that has proposed the work and really dialing into the details, they're going to push it across the finish line and we're going to see something tangible. You know, if we spread them out and they splinter off into little subcommittees, working on this, working on that, bringing it back to the main group to then vote on things, it's just going to take longer. I think if we put them on this while they're working on the gateway project, so it's council member Sharoo's point, there's going to be more money in their budget. And so I think that that's that's what I would like to move.
Councilmember, yeah, council member, sorry to interrupt. We're, Scott, how much longer do you have a presentation? Because we're getting into a council discussion part of the public hearing. We haven't quite opened up for public input yet. So are we, do we have many more slides? How many more slides?
We do. We do. So we can come back. If you want to come back to this, but I have gateway project, is it three hundred?
Well, that my point is, we haven't asked, we haven't opened for public input yet. So there might be comments. We had people saying there are at least five people. They might have comments about this.
So we'll, council, we'll come back to this. I'm going to put a little yells here. We'll come back. Come back to that. Okay, let's move on. Thank you. A good discussion, though. Mr. Lilio will talk about this slide.
Okay, the proposed twenty 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 one debt service fund. This is the city's facility lease activity for the Douglas Street Gap closure, the capital improvement project. This includes proposed budget in a for appropriation of five hundred forty five thousand dollars. This is for the annual payment of principal and interest. Now, the final payment will be in August of twenty thirty five, so there's about fifteen years left on this lease. Proposed enterprise fund, water, wastewater, solid waste. So this, I do want to stress, this does not include any change in the fee structure for water or wastewater. As you are aware, we are currently conducting that study. So this is being status quo. We do for water, we are estimating eighteen point three million. Appropriations at twenty two million. Twenty point one million of that operating, which is mainly the purchase of water from West Basin. So purchase of portable and recycled water from West Basin makes up vast majority of that twenty point two million. And the C I P for water of one point nine million, those are two projects, the Grand Avenue Water Main Replacement and the Indiana Street Water Main Replacement. For wastewater, estimated revenues of about three point one million. Estimated proposed operating budget of three point eight million dollars. You can see there there's a structural deficit there. And that three point eight million, the bulk of that, I think about sixty percent of that is the cost for Hyperion. So the all the properties west of P C H, their wastewater is serviced by the city of L A at Hyperion. And that has increased significantly over the last four years. So that's driving that increase in the operational budget. The proposed capital budget of seven hundred and ninety five thousand dollars. That is a total of three projects. That's Lifeguard Pump Station, Acacia, two hundred thousand dollars for Acacia Park. And then the wastewater infrastructure replacement is an annual replacement program of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Golf Fund, estimated revenues of eight hundred and two thousand and proposed operational budget of seven hundred twenty seven thousand. We are anticipating a operational positive retained earnings at the end of the year. That could potentially be used to help pay back part of the loan that the golf fund owes to the equipment replacement fund. That loan is approximately five point seven million dollars right now. And then the wastewater fund at two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And then the wastewater fund at two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Next is uh the Internal Service Fund. So again, there's three funds here, equipment replacement, general liability, workers' comp. Um any specific questions here? Yeah, I, I just one thing that I'll note is the Equipment Replacement Fund. While the proposed budget is at seven point eight million, we typically do not spend anywhere near what we're budgeting. Um we, we do budget uh all the items that are fully funded or near fully funded. Um doesn't mean that they're going to be purchased, though, next year. It could be uh purchased a falling year as well. But we do budget that full amount, so we don't have to keep going back to council uh to uh adjust the appropriations. A further discussion on the Workers' Compensation Fund. Um so the annual premiums have increased, this is our insurance premiums, have increased by thirty-five percent um since twenty eighteen nineteen. Uh so twenty eighteen nineteen, the annual premium for insurance was eight hundred and thirty-five thousand. And for the uh twenty twenty-one, that premium uh has increased to just a little bit over one point one million dollars.
Joe, is that, is that driven by claims?
By claims and experience, yes.
Thank you. Hopefully, hopefully, our rate of claims will, will reduce with the new risk management position.
Correct. And, and our risk pool uh uses um a seven-year rolling average of, of, of claims. General Liability Fund. So here, we actually have some good news. Um our annual premium uh has decreased by nineteen percent since uh eighteen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. So it was uh just right below one point one million. And for uh twenty twenty-one, the annual premium is about eight hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. And again, that, that shows that uh we've been very aggressive at the areas uh of claims that we, uh we're having issues with. Uh tripping falls, uh tree limbs falling on, on private property. Um so we've uh increased um uh risk mitigation programs in those areas, and that's reflected here in our premiums.
Joe, if I can, and I hate to keep chugging in, but I know that, that without getting into gory details for public consumption, that comes with a hefty deductible. So when, when people litigate against the city, that money comes directly out of Rec Park. And when people want to know why the plunge takes forever or why art funds are going to a Gateway project, that comes straight from deductibles when people sue the city.
Correct. And a city's uh what's called self-insured retention is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So cities on the hook for the first seven hundred and fifty thousand before the insurance kicks in. And then we are covered through our risk pool um up to thirty-five million dollars.
Hey, Joe, and then what year was it that we did Richmond Street? It was so contentious, but we pulled out all the FICUS. We had all the buckled sidewalks at twenty-six, fifteen or sixteen?
I believe that was, it's like, I came here in twenty sixteen, it happened just thereafter, so it might have been late sixteen, early twenty seventeen.
It's actually, so it's good news. I mean, people, a lot of people didn't like that. Um but that was a major contributor, the FICUS, as they still are around town, major contributors, slip and fall, which become very expensive. So it's good news regarding that.
Absolutely.
That, that deductible is the cost of the Acacia Pool. Just, you're scoring at home.
Okay, and other uh other risk uh programs that the city uh participates in, auto fiscal damage program. So that annual premium uh is decreasing twelve percent from last year, from the previous year's uh premium. And then other programs we belong to, crime uh cyber program, uh property and equipment breakdown and terrorism. So terrorism, uh that coverage began last year, so it's the second year of, of coverage for terrorism. Okay, to get into the uh capital improvement uh program projects. So we are in year two of a three-year CIP plan. So last year, we brought before council for the first time a multi-year uh CIP uh program, three-year program. So again, we're on year two. Attachment B in the agenda packet uh reflects the individual CIP project. So there's a total of thirty-three projects totaling uh fourteen point nine million dollars. Um and I just want to explain real quick, if you look at Attachment B, you'll see thirty-seven numbers, and that's because uh there's several projects to have uh multiple funding sources, and I'll get into that in a subsequent slide. However, there are only a total of thirty-three projects. There are nine new projects totaling uh just a little over eight point seven million dollars and twenty-four carryover projects totaling six point one million dollars. And then carryover projects, uh those are defined as uh projects that city council previously approved, uh but were not e- either completed or have not begun before September thirtieth, twenty twenty. So they roll over, they carry over uh into the new fiscal year. So this is a snapshot of Attachment B. Uh this is covering half of the general fund uh projects. And here, what I want to uh highlight is item number two and number four, Recreation Park Projects, totaling eight hundred thousand in new, new dollars. And number four, City Hall Window Replacement, four hundred and fifty thousand of new dollars. So these projects were previously on the nineteen, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget, and they were approved last year. At mid-year, when we came to council in May, we removed those items from the budget, defunded them. And we told council, we committed that we would come back uh to fund these projects in uh twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. We did that uh during mid-year to help balance the budget for uh nineteen twenty. So again, those projects are brought on, but they are new projects. Um go through the next slide. So this is the second half of the general fund projects. And if we look at the bottom line there, it says total general fund CIP. So there's uh just a little over four point three million in carryover projects, so projects that council had previously approved uh either in the prior year or even in some cases, two years ago, and they're just continuing. So CIP projects, they do not necessarily fall in line with fiscal year. They carry over usually multi, uh multiple fiscal years before they're completed. So again, carryover four point three million and then new projects of the one million two fifty, which I touched on. Uh total general fund project CIP of uh just under five point six million. Water Enterprise Fund, so I did touch on these previously. Uh those total uh one point nine million dollars, and those are the two projects listed. Wastewater, again, I did touch on this previously as well, uh total seven hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for the three projects. Transportation Funds. Uh so this is uh your gas tax, Prop C, Prop A, SB one, Measure R, Measure M. Um we, we do have a very large project there, uh item number thirty, the Park Place Gap Closure. Uh we were, city was successful uh obtaining five million dollars in Measure R funding uh through, through the cog. Um and then the roadway rehab, rehab programs, annual program of five hundred thousand dollars, and the sidewalk improvement construction program. Again, that's an annual program of two hundred and fifty thousand. Um and then we do have uh two hundred thousand of carryover for the sidewalk program as well. So total uh CIP for transportation funds of five million nine hundred and fifty thousand. And then um grants or other special funds, um items number thirty-three through thirty-seven. Uh new funding totaling four hundred and ten thousand and then uh carryover of two hundred and fifty for total of six hundred and sixty thousand from those funding sources. So if we go down to the very bottom line there, total CIP, all funding sources. You have carryover of six point one million, uh uh new funding of just over eight point seven for total CIP uh budget of fourteen point nine million dollars. Any specific questions on uh these slides from the CIP?
Joe, two quick buried headlines. Uh Scott Midnick, great job on that five million dollar, getting that over the finish line at the cog. And Meredith Pettit with a going-away gift for us of nailing that Prop sixty-eight grant for the park. That was, that was in debate based on the radius away from the apartments on Imperial to get that park money. Uh those are two, that, that's five point six or five zero six eight million. Great job.
Okay, we're going to move on to uh pension and um OPEP obligations. So OPEP, it's an acronym for Other Post-Employment Benefits. And for our city, that really means retirement healthcare. Uh so we are going to continue to implement the twenty eighteen Long-Term Pension Funding Plan uh which was helped, prepared uh and, and produced uh the council in October of twenty eighteen by Bartel and Associates. Um so we're, our plan, long-term plan is to reduce the public safety employees unfunded liability. Um so the rate is going to uh peak at ninety-nine point five percent. So that's the pension rate based on uh what's considered pensionable income um at its peak in twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty. Um and get it down to about eighteen percent by uh twenty forty. So again, that's just twenty-year horizon um uh to get uh that unfunded pension uh liability paid down for the miscellaneous employees. So miscellaneous employees means uh non-sworn employees, so the, the non-public safety. That rate peaks at thirty-three point eight percent uh again in twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty. And it will get down to nine percent by twenty forty uh by following the plan uh that we have in place. And we've been, uh council's been very proactive, uh uh very, very aggressive at paying down uh the pension liabilities over the last three years, and we're going to continue that course uh as well. Um so the city will utilize the Pension Ad Hoc Committee to study, uh one, the reduction in annual purse payments via the use of possible pension obligation bonds. Uh this is, this is a tool that many cities are utilizing right now. Uh particularly in the South Bay, a lot of cities are moving forward with this. Um also, uh they continue, continue to explore accelerated funding uh in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, and other cost-saving options. So uh just to uh reiterate where we're at right now, we have um I'll use the term refunded, all of our uh unfunded pension liabilities to a twenty-year amortization policy. So we are on target uh by twenty forty, just with the current plan, uh to have that uh reduced uh and down to those levels. Back on this slide, eighteen percent for public safety, nine percent for miscellaneous by twenty forty. These tools here, uh the pension obligation bonds and uh maybe some accelerated funding, may, maybe to help uh accelerate some of those uh time horizons.
Joe, quick question.
Yes, sir.
Before we get into this next slide, can you remind us, based on the last actuarial CalPERS results, where we stand in terms of liability, total liability?
So we just uh received the latest actuarial uh plans. Uh so those reports are issued each August by CalPERS uh to member agencies. Um and we are currently at uh just under one hundred and forty million dollars.
Thank you.
Reminder, that's without medical.
Correct. That, that is for um pension costs or and, and it kind of bifurcate this, uh we do have what's called classic employees and pepper employees. The unfunded uh liability is for the classic employee. So any employee that was employed by the city prior to January first, twenty thirteen, or that was in the pension system already, prior to January first, twenty thirteen. Okay, OPEP, again, this is a, other post-employment benefits. Uh continue to implement the long-term OPEP uh funding plan. And it's uh to reduce the city's current unfunded liability from sixty percent down to zero percent by twenty twenty, twenty thirty. So we're currently forty percent funded for this, which is very healthy. Um a, a survey that was recently done, about two-thirds of municipalities in the state of California are only twenty-five percent funded or less. So we're, we're in a good position compared to our peers. Uh and we'll continue to explore accelerated funding options as well for this.
Sorry, maybe I missed it. What'd you say the balance was on OPEP?
Um so our total uh liability is um about fifty-eight million dollars, and we have, I believe, currently approximately twenty-six million funded. Um. Yeah, it's about forty percent funded. And we do have a trust for that, and that trust has been performing very well. Um on, on average, uh about eight percent uh a year, uh annual return. So future challenges, uh possible declining fund balance. Um so this is a a, a chart that uh you've seen uh many times before. Um I show it during strategic planning, during uh budget study sessions, during mid-year. Um so this, I, I do uh want to explain, this does not assume any new revenue sources. So any new uh taxes are not uh factored in here. So for instance, uh the Measure C that was passed by Elsagundo voters back in twenty eighteen, the three-quarter cent sales tax uh has not been triggered yet. So that is not factored into the revenue sources. And as far as I'm aware, uh LA County does not have any plans to place a, a local sales tax on the ballot at this time. Um so that's kind of in, in, in the holding queue, if you will. Um some other things, uh like Top Golf is not factored in here. Um any new development that we may be uh aware of, potential development down the road many years, that's not factored in here as well. Um so we are assuming uh about one and a half, two percent growth in, in our revenue sources. And the reason why you see that big gap between twenty twenty-one, which is at the far left, and the next uh set of bars, twenty-one, twenty-two, is because we're going from a nine-month back to a twelve-month uh budget cycle. So that's the reason for that large variance here.
This does factor in, Joe, a rebound in our TOT numbers with recovery in the revenue bar?
Um so, so the revenue bar starts in July one of twenty twenty-one. This does assume, yes, rebound of the economy by then, correct?
Does it factor in any, any sort of unusual growth based on uh the new stadium or the two new stadiums, if there's, if there's a new basketball stadium in uh Inglewood and guest ratios in there? So, so all of those, those sorts of, of externalities are not factored in on this.
They, they are not. A- as we start to actually see that come in, then we'll factor that in and readjust uh this presentation.
Thanks.
And I, I did see the Rams uh game on, on television, beautiful stadium, but it was completely empty. Um so if, if we continue with the projections, revenues uh as projected and expenditures, uh as projected expenditures do uh count for the increasing CalPERS costs and medical and MOU uh increases. Um we begin to see that there's obviously a structural deficit and our fund balance uh begins to decline. So that orange-yellow bar going horizontally across uh line going horizontally across the graph represents the GF Way recommended minimum sixteen point six percent uh of fund balance. That declining gray line uh represents the projected fund balance if things remain status quo. So I'm going to turn it back over to Scott now.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we're coming into the home stretch, so bear with us. Thank you for your indulgence so far. So we're going to talk a little bit about the challenges and opportunities. Um there are, uh and then this is delineated in the uh city manager's budget message. We'll hit the highlights here. So there are many challenges. Uh it's not all gloom and doom, but let's talk about the challenges. Prolonged economic recovery due to COVID nineteen. The longer the virus, the, the longer the financial doldrums. Um we could go into a double-dip recession. Uh that's a, that, that happened uh before, when there was a pandemic a hundred years ago. And many economists think that you could see a double-dip recession. Don't know if that'll happen, but we do need to call it out. Uh rising retirement costs, we've articulated that, that, that remains a challenge for us. We will get over the hump, though, uh in about a decade. Rising medical insurance costs, we see, seem to have that um becoming um slowly under control. But, but who knows what will happen down the road. General fund subsidies of other funds, whether it's solid waste or um of other operations. Um that, that could be more challenged, prove to be challenging going forward. Uh rising infrastructure facilities maintenance costs, you've heard me almost from the moment I started here talking about the negative impacts of deferred uh maintenance. But, but counsel, we know you're trying really hard to be supportive of tackling that. Uh rising uh costs, just in, in general, for the different services that we provide. Those are samples. So balance tools. So what happens if we go to scenario three? What happens if the uh it takes longer for a vaccine to be implemented and uh And the the economic recovery takes longer than we anticipated. We'll take a look at the existing labor contracts. We'll likely have to hold the line on the the new contracts when it comes time to negotiations if the economy doesn't bounce back. We'll take another, we'll revisit the use of furloughs, including the winter holiday furloughs. I, we did try to do this last year. And didn't have much luck with it. We'll try again. There are a number of cities that between. Christmas and New Year's, they will, will, will shut down the non-essential services. And require employees to use vacation time and other time to do that, that there are some cost savings with that. That has to be negotiated with the unions, of course. We could look at further position reductions. Look at early retirement incentives. We we are taking a look at that. The number of cities are doing that. Create financial incentives for people to retire. Increase use of private contracts, privatization of services. We know there are AB five challenges associated with that. But there are definitely cost savings that can take place. Regional, excuse me, regionalization of services. This is a trend taking place throughout California. You will see more of that. The South Bay cities are definitely talking to each other about that. I know there are pros and cons. I know it's political, but from a business perspective. It often makes sense to to take a look at it. Across the board appropriation reductions are always an option. Tools in the, in the, that can be put into the toolbox. These are some tools that as your staff we don't like, but continued deferred maintenance. That costs you more in the long run. It's not advisable, but it's a short-term fix if absolutely need be. Sell off city property and assets. You can always look at properties that the city owns and sell them off. Not advisable by any means, but it certainly is an option. Put it into the general fund subsidies that we talked about. Continued use of reserves, not advisable to use reserves for recurring expenses, not advisable to use reserves for. Staff costs, but that is an option if we become more desperate. And revenue enhancements, definitely an option to look at your. What other revenue sources are out there. We talked about the sales tax inefficiencies and how we can fix that. Additional service reductions, not desirable, but we can look at cutting or eliminating services. And then for the reorganization of the of city departments, mostly the reorganizations that have taken place in this budget are for efficiency. There are some financial benefits to them, but we could start looking at reorganization. Departments for a financial benefit. Okay, so future opportunities. The glass, we will tell you the glass is clearly more half-full than half-empty, over a billion dollars, we heard. In new constructions taking place as we sit here. The the development community, the private sector, they look at El Segundo, they're looking past. COVID nineteen. So definitely, we will see the economy come back. And and in a strong way, we just don't know when. And the council, I want to compliment you and on your decision to move forward on updating the downtown specific plan. And to support doing an RFQ for developers to submit qualifications to repurpose the civic center. Site, that was one of your strategic plans. So there's a lot of interest in. And good quality developers to to come in and do that. So. The the mid to long-term looks really good for us as a community. So going past that long-term financial strategic plan, the finance director mentioned how with the CIP, we're now doing multiple year. Capital improvement or capital planning and budgeting. We've hired a firm to help us look by not just five or ten years, but actually fifteen, twenty years plus. Down the road and come back with some models for the council. So you can better understand the impacts of some of the land use decisions. And what lies down the road. That'll also help us with our reserves. Sorry to repeat what was said before, but if we had even enhanced reserves, we'd be in a better position to to weather the storm that we're facing now. Next slide, you'll hear more about that. That'll be in front of you. We are recommending that two years from now, we start with the Bino budget process. Many, many cities are doing this and it's been a trend for two, two, three decades. We still have a one-year fiscal year, but we would do two years at a time. So we go through this budget exercise every other year rather than once a year. We'll come back to you with more details and how to do that. So then now the budget steps, let's talk about what's coming up. With the adoption of the budget tonight. What comes next? The the city council ad hoc pension subcommittee, you will start working on the pension stuff in in earnest on September twenty-first. Then the new year commences on October first. And then October sixth, the water and wastewater funds, financial plan, we come back to you with that, with the next step and and looking at that. And then in between that bullet and the next one, actually, we will come back to you in October twentieth with some of the. Restructuring implementation items. So the department reorganization, we. We have some position cleanups and and technical and legal documents that the council needs to act on to. Officially implement those, including like name changes, that type of thing. And then the budget preparation for the twenty-one, twenty-two budget at the staff level will begin in December. And then the long-term financial strategic plan that I mentioned earlier, we will be working on that. In earnest in early twenty twenty-one. And then we'll have a mid-year twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one. Budget report to council in March, so four and a half months into it. At this point, we're available for for questions. And we appreciate your your time and attention as we went through this exercise. So it, we'll go to.
Sort of remind council that, let's keep it to questions. Because we got to hear from the public.
Yeah, so maybe you want to do the public now and then then you can do this and we do have to come back on arts and culture item.
Yeah, let's do that. Okay, so. Getting back to, okay, public hearing is now open for public input. Madam Deputy City Clerk, is there anyone in chamber wishing to speak?
There is no one in chamber wishing to speak.
Okay, and Madam Clerk, I think you have some comments to read, is that right? Emails?
I do. All right, I will start. As someone who loves living in El Segundo, but is often shocked by housing prices, I would like to comment that I'm in favor. Of developing an affordable housing plan. We have so many amazing teachers, civil servants and service industry workers in this community. Who deserve to live confidently and comfortably in the city. They give so much to us. Lisa Coleman. I'm a lifelong resident and I'm very happy that council is working on low-income housing initiatives. I believe that this will be an important asset to our community. And I fully support this as a priority for our city strategic plan. Kristen Dorsey. I am writing in support of affordable housing in El Segundo. Affordable housing will create an opportunity to become a more welcoming and inclusive place. We will grow and expand as a community and it will provide. More affordable places for employees and small business owners of El Segundo to be able to live where they work. Let's have an open mind and welcome others into our wonderful town. Sarah Meyer. Good evening, Mayor Boyle, city council members and staff. I write to express my support for the city council's efforts and address the housing affordability crisis. Thank you for your leadership on these efforts. To make sure our teachers support staff, small business owners and employees at the businesses in our community can live in the town in which they work. Thank you, Anya Goldstein. My name is David Hallup and I live and I am an El Segundo resident. I am writing in support of the efforts being made towards increasing affordable housing development in the city. If we are serious about the increasing diversity, equity and inclusion in the community, housing is absolutely essential part of the effort. Substantial research shows increasing access to affordable housing is the key to reducing. Intergenerational poverty and the most cost-effective strategy for reducing childhood poverty and increasing economic mobility. Moreover, increasing access to affordable housing also bolsters economic growth. Research shows that the shortage of affordable housing costs the US economy approximately two trillion, two trillion a year in lower wages. And productivity. And that each dollar invested in affordable housing boosts the local economy, including. Through additional local tax revenue and supports jobs creation and retention. But most importantly, it is morally the right thing to do for our future. And my last one is. Excuse me, from the Arts and Culture Committee Chair Neil von Flu. The Arts and Culture Advisory Committee is presenting a revised Cultural Development Fund budget to the El Segundo City Council for your consideration this evening. After the recent buddy, but budget session, ACC Chair Neil von Flu. Met with Scott Mitnick, Barbara Voss and Melissa McCollum to discuss council's feedback. And come up with a revision that reflects an emphasis on tangible public art, including projects currently under development. This included adding and or increasing amounts for important public concerns. Such as the Gateway Product Project, Parklet Improvement Initiative and the Library Park Activation Project. We brought the revision back to the committee and with the help of Mr. Mitnick, spent another session discussing the proposed amounts. And how best to prioritize these needs while also reflecting the ACC's aspiration to. Support other important artistic and cultural endeavors in the community. We hope that the creation of a holding account with oversight and approval provided by the city manager. Might allow for the city to simultaneously invest in important public art, institutions and cultural programming. While smaller projects are not as visible as the gateway to our city, they can bring. Community members together at a critical time in our history. And demonstrate El Segundo's commitment to supporting the rich cultural lives that we seek to experience. The ACC looks forward to discussing our work plan for twenty twenty-one in more detail as part of our report to council. At your October twenty eighth meeting. That's it.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Jerusalem. Oh, there you go, Chris.
Hey, that was Pimentel with the. Motion and Drew with the second, okay? All right, Madam Clerk, voice vote, please.
Councilmember Drew?
Yes.
Councilmember Nico?
Hi.
Councilmember Persek? Councilmember, Mayor Proton Pimentel?
Hi.
And Mayor Boiles?
Yes.
All right, you're closed.
Great. Let's open it up for council discussion. Okay, well, Mr. Mitnick, I certainly have some things I want to talk about, but before we do so, Scott, would you like us to go back to the arts and culture discussion?
That would be instructive, thank you.
Okay. It would be helpful to have Mr. Lilio pull up the slide again if it's not too much trouble.
It's slide number twenty-six.
All right, thank you. All right, so to. Pick up where we left off, I think we were talking about moving a hundred thousand dollars from a downtown art beautification. Into the city gateway entry project and I'll leave it that and turn over to one of my colleagues.
I propose moving the hundred thousand dollars in the downtown art beautification. Line item up to the city gateway entry project, leaving that at three hundred thousand. Library Park Activation, a hundred thousand and eighty-six thousand in the holding account, leaving the total budget the same at four hundred and eighty-six thousand.
Okay.
So this is. Scott, I just have one question. You were talking about the holding account, the eighty-six thousand dollars. That they wouldn't have to come back to the council on spending that, it would just be through your approval. I just want to clarify that that's what you said because. I'm I'm not sure that that's what the intent of the council is. So can you just clarify that for me?
That that's the recommendation of the committee and you can make whatever revisions to that suggestion that you like.
Well, I I just, I mean, if we're here talking about. You know, a hundred thousand here moving that, you know, a hundred thousand moved downtown, that's eighty-six thousand dollars that we're saying. Well, they're not, they don't want it to come in front of the council, it's going to just for you to approve. I'm not sure if I'm okay with that.
Right, their their thinking was, or the thinking was. That. Our office is aware of what the council's preference and desires are on on this topic, so. To help move it along and you can certainly have them come back to the city council. You you have a lot of flexibility here.
Yeah, I I just think it should come, this is such a new account, a new, a new fund. I think all of these. All of these need to be come in front of the council. And I'm not sure how rest you feel that that's.
Hey, Councilwoman Persak, if I may, let's see if we get a second on the motion on the floor for Councilman Nico related to moving a hundred thousand. We'll get to yours next. That's okay with you. If you want to make a motion out of that.
Pimentel second.
Okay, so we have, we need to take a vote then. The vote is to move a hundred thousand from downtown art and beautification into the city gateway, two hundred thousand. Madam Clerk, you want to take a vote, please?
Yes, can you tell me, once again, I was not prepared for a vote, who?
Nico, Nico made the motion and Pimentel was the second.
Thank you. Councilmember, Councilmember Drew?
Yes.
Councilmember Nico?
Hi.
Councilmember Persek?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pimentel?
Hi.
Mayor Boiles? Okay, we can't hear you, but did you say yes?
Oh, I did, yes. You can't hear me?
We can now. All right, you're good. It passed five oh.
Thank you. Okay, Carol, do you want to make a motion there?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that, you know, until further, further, further date. All of these spend on the Cultural Development Fund should come in front of the council.
Okay. I, unless there's any further discussion on that, I'd be prepared in a second. Mr. Nickel, go ahead.
Carol, I just want to, I I just want to give you the opportunity to be more clear about that. So in the discussion at the Arts and Culture. Subcommittee or committee, you know, their thoughts of programming and such, this could be something as small as, you know, getting. Authors at the library paired with artists to read a book and have the illustrator there and and doing things like that. It's that type of programming. Do we want to get that deep into the weeds with regards to the cultural arts and programming of the city?
Well, I mean, I wouldn't mind them putting a money aside for specific programs like that. I just want to make sure that. We have a, this is such a new fund that we have oversight of where the money is going. Eighty-six thousand dollars is a lot of money for. You know. For author fairs. So I just want to make sure. You know, we were paying attention at the beginning and then once we have an understanding of the type of programming that they're going to fund. Then I'm okay with it.
I want to second Councilmember Pierstix. And it. Impetus here and that this was a part of one of the key things that, that when we embrace this with the committee. We embrace, this was part of it, that that we would have a role in this. Now, there could be, they could lump together things and say, look, we have. We want to diminish expenses on author fairs for ten thousand dollars or however they may. But part of us agreeing to this was unfortunately. And unfortunately, in a sort of collective sermon, a degree of cumbersome oversight that comes with the the will of the council. It it's not to to be overweening in this regard, but that was, that was part of this. And it was what got, one of the things that got this approved as a fund.
Hey, Aaron Council? I might just add, until, I don't know that a motion is necessary. Certainly, the discussion can be had. Until the, the staff would need to bring to the council a. Agenda item to amend the municipal code or or take other action that would actually enable. That body to approve expenditures because they don't have that authority currently. So. You don't actually need to do anything to prevent them from doing that at this point in time because. It will actually take a proactive. Action by the council to allow them to approve expenditures.
Okay, good. Well, you got direction anyway, because I was going to agree. So I think you have a general consensus of what should go forward on that end. Okay. So, Mr. Mitnick, you have what you need here, right?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. What's, okay, so now a general discussion about the budget. Can you guys hear me okay now? Lance said, you still can't hear me?
It's really low.
Yes.
Strange. All right, well, I'm going to open it up to, open it up to the council members on discussion items while I try and get on another device.
Well, we can hear you.
Okay, regardless.
Just use your teacher voice.
Okay. Are there any comments, concerns? Because if not, I I do have a couple of things, but I was going to ask you guys if there are any questions, comments, concerns about the budget or if we're good. Okay, one that strikes me is one that I, we've been talking about for a while now. And if you look at, if you look at our budget, you'll see, and Joe pointed out and Scott did as well, that almost a hundred percent. And if you look at, if you look at our budget, you'll see, and Joe pointed out, and Scott did as well, that almost 100% of our wages will be a pension burden and not the near, not the too soon in the future, you know, I'm trying to say there, in the very short order, basically. One for one, for every dollar in wages we spend, we will have a pension burden. And while 20 years from now, we'll be in a better situation, there's going to be a lot of pain between now and 20 years from now. If you look at back-of-the-envelope math and you take our unfunded pension liability, this is assuming we could buy it out tomorrow, which we know would be really difficult, because I've asked that question of Mr. Lilio and Mr. Mitnick, what would it take exactly to buy out our pension obligation, assuming we could do so? Let's assume that you just took the unfunded liability, it's like $8,500 a resident, and I love that that metric, it's something Chris Pimentel was talking about when he was running for office. If you put the OPEB on top of that, that's probably $10,000 for every resident just in pension burden for our employees. I mean, let that sink in. I have five members of my family, I actually have five kids, seven of us total, that's a big number. And, you know, it's not changing anytime soon, and while we moved from, with the Pepper Act, that was good, we made progress, we moved away from some of the tiers in terms of how people are in their pension and when they're eligible for the pension, we have a long way to go. The ad hoc committee was something that former councilmember Brand suggested, it got set up, Don and I served on that last couple of years, that was great, we set up a pension trust fund. As Joe mentioned earlier, we went to a 20-year amortization schedule on our pension obligations opposed to 30. We took the negative line item amortizations, the years we had a negative return from CalPERS, we paid those down directly so we wouldn't continue to be penalized for those in future years in accrued interest. We did some really smart things, and we saved like $6 million in true costs to our city, so that's all good. But we're just getting started, as far as I'm concerned, we have so much more to do, and I'm thankful that Lance and Chris are going to take the torch on the pension ad hoc, I think it's Lance and Chris, you gave me a surprise look. It's, oh, sorry, it's Scott and Chris, sorry Lance. Anyway, I'm excited about that, but I want to ask the council to take a more aggressive stance here. And I wanted to do it now because I want this to be something that we deliberate as a council, because I think it's important, I think we owe it to our residents. I think we need to do something more dramatic, I'm not quite sure what it is, you know, I even think that we, okay, I'm getting something, sorry about that, we need to look at a couple of different things. One is, is there a way for us to improve the public safety model that we currently have in our city? And I'll give you one example. And I might get in trouble for saying this because it's specific, but I'm going to do it anyway. There's a city in Northern California that went to a very interesting model back when they incorporated, they had the advantage of incorporating and starting with this model, but the model is shared service model. And the model is police, fire, and paramedics all-in-one shared services. So I'm just going to plant the seed and say that other cities have done it, it's not easy. I'm also asking, could we pay our public safety officers more, not less? Despite where our budget is right now, could we pay our public safety officers more? Maybe they do more for that, maybe they're cross-trained differently, but could we pay them more? And then could we honor any pensions that have already been earned by officers, but maybe revisit future retirements focusing on a defined contribution as opposed to a defined benefit? And for anyone that's watching at home, defined benefit right now is a pension program. But could we pay our people more and ask them to be more responsible for putting money aside for themselves and their families? So I'm just putting those out there as questions that I think we should be asking, given the stark reality, the fiscal reality that we have ahead of us. We're not going to get out of this hole by raising taxes, nor in my opinion should we. So if we want to maintain a independent public or independent police and fire and public safety in general, which as we know is very expensive, more than 50% of our budget, how are we going to do that? How are we going to do that for the next 20 years? How are we going to avoid going to LA County, which has been talked about before and died in this town, and our neighbor to the south just went to LA County? So I think we need to be asking some hard questions. Next three or four years are going to be the most painful part financially for our city as it relates to the pension burden and public safety. So, you know, it's probably not the most popular sentiment, but I wanted to put it out there during a budget discussion because I think it's something that we shouldn't be afraid to talk about.
Mr. Mayor, so that you're not standing on that island alone. I've had a few conversations with Mr. Lilio prior to Mr. Mitnick's arrival, and then again, after Mr. Mitnick came to us a little over a year ago, about this concept of, like, financing. How can we pay it today? How can we pay it down, or pay down a huge lump sum of the unfunded liability? And then tie us to a straight payment, and you know, we always see the graph with the line going up, and my question always is, well, you know, if we dumped 20 or 30 million dollars into that liability right now, how does that flatten that? Does it still hit the 99.5% of that peak rate, or is it flattened? Is it something that we can, we can live with, that we can get through? You know, and something that was mentioned to me, but it was also mentioned that it's not popular, it's something that cities that don't have money do, is pension obligation bonds. You know, and, you know, I even looked into, I mean, when you think of personal finances, you know, if you own a home or you have personal assets, you could refinance them in order to pay down other higher interest-bearing debts. You know, and so I look, I look at all of the assets the city has and say, okay, well, what do we have? What can we leverage at a low constant rate and potentially eliminate, you know, these higher variable rates that we're dealing with? And see where that goes, I mean, this is something that, you know, I think it's one of our priorities, which is to decide what we are going to do with the funds that come in from the golf course land lease. And this is one of the things, you know, I said it before and I'll say it again, I really do not want any new revenues that we bring in, AKA Topgolf, to just go straight into the general fund and just be absorbed throughout all of our departments, but rather take that exact amount of money and say, okay, well, how much will that allow us to borrow? Can we borrow against this 50-year land lease? Is that something that's out there? Is it not something that's out there? But it's something that I think is very important so that that number, as, you know, Mayor Protem Pimentel mentioned during his campaign, per person liability, we can bring that down or we can grab control of it. So, I mean, that's something that I can get behind wholeheartedly, talk about, try to set policy on.
Thanks, Scott. Joe, what's the number, remind me what the number was if we could come up with the funds to buy out our obligation altogether?
So I just looked at the new reports that were issued last month. Public Safety is $435 million, miscellaneous is $235 million, so a total of $670 million. That's obviously not a viable option, there's a lot more productive options, which I know will be discussed with the ad hoc committee, and PLB's pension obligation bonds is a tool that a lot of agencies are using right now. For instance, so our total unfunded liability at that $140 million, CalPERS is assessing a 7% interest rate to, to us, to every member agency that has an unfunded liability. Pension obligation bonds, the theory is you go to market, issue, let's say 95% of your unfunded liability or 90%, and that money over to CalPERS, now you're only paying maybe 3%, depending on what your agency's rating is, instead of the 7%, creating significant savings. So that's kind of, you know, a very 30,000-foot level of the idea behind the pension obligation ones.
You know, I know we're sort of citing the campaign pieces, and it's important to try and make things usable and you can wrap your head around it, but when we talk about our obligation to the unfunded liability for both retirement and medical, that means that if we took every dollar in this budget, every general fund dollar, and spent it only on our pension obligation, we would have to do that for two and a half years before we would break even, which is an astounding number, you know, it tends, we tend to lose track of, well, what does 3 million mean, what does 100 million mean? That means every dollar, we shut down the park, we didn't have any, anything, we'd spend all that money and still not get there in two and a half years. So, you know, I, my concern, without getting too far into the ad hoc committee world and down that, is that when you, when you issue bonds and you free up capital, we have to, it puts an enormous burden of discipline on a council to not spend that, that free capital, right? And that's sort of the advantage of pay-as-you-go, is it forces discipline? We obviously have gotten way out of, out of step at this point, but I think, Mr. Mayor, it's valid to talk about things like that, the committee might, or things about, do we pre-allocate new revenue? Does the golf course, do we save 50 cents out of every piece of golf course revenue goes directly against us? Or dollar, no, dollar for dollar that comes from the golf course, or everything above TOT revenues of this, this number? What we run up against is this dreaded structural imbalance that we see, that even without touching the unfunded liability, we're still structured upside down. So we'll need TOT dollars just to even that out. So, on the one that I support and wholeheartedly support putting effort to this, it preoccupies me as the existential threat to the city sort of element. And I think similarly, it goes hand in hand with public safety pieces. That's a slightly different argument, where we look across, what do the citizens of El Segundo expect the city to do? You know, what basket of services do they, do they expect? And what tools are we bringing to bear? You know, they expect a degree of safety, and if the tools for that are 300 policemen, 200 policemen, 100 policemen, or 64 sworn policemen, it's what the residents and citizens want, and we're obligated to give that to them because that's what we're here to provide. Now, what shape that takes, how we provide those services, is part of what our grand dialogue of this year is. You know, if most of what policemen respond to is code enforcement issues, do we need more code enforcement, code compliance, excuse me? If we're spending a lot of firemen time dealing with car accidents, do we have the right mix of equipment and gear for those tasks? So I think a big piece, when the city manager spoke of restructuring in this budget, part of the structural piece is to make sure that we are providing services in the most cost-efficient manner to the services that the community needs. So with that, in the shape of that, you know, I tend to be somewhat deferential on, make, you know, shape the city governance so that works.
Thanks, Mayor Protem and Lance, and what they had to say is, I know we're going to the union discussions too, we're revisiting all those because we have the multi-year contract, so we're going to have those discussions with union groups. Councilmember Drew?
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Mayor, I'm glad you brought up, obviously, these are, these are always hot-button topics, but I think we would be doing a disservice to the community by not looking at every possible scenario. What can be done? What are the costs involved? What's the cost-benefit analysis of each one of them? So really, the only way we can come up with what the right decision is, is by knowing what all the information is. So, sorry to put a lot of pressure on the ad hoc committee, but in general, I think that's really what we're looking at right now. We realize that, you know, this situation was coming up on us anyway. COVID has accelerated that process for us, so it's a little bit more in our face now than it would have been. So in the end, we just got to roll up our sleeves and dig into it and figure out what are the best options for us, for us to pursue and still do what's best to the community.
Thank you, Councilmember Drew. Okay, well, we're going to be going to union discussions, Councilmember Persek, I don't know if you want to say anything about it, certainly not obligated to or anything.
I just concur, we just, I think we need to take a hard look at everything we're doing and figure out a way to trim where we can, you know, do we need to automate more, do we need to put new processes in place, but there's, there's definitely some trimming we can do, and we just need to bulk, tighten our belts a little bit and look at it, the whole picture.
Thank you, councilmember. Okay, now, I thank you for allowing me that, I'm going to turn it back over to the council, we, this is really the opportunity for further council discussion as it relates to the budget, any changes we might want to make, if any. I think staff's done an incredible job through this iterative process, so I'll turn it back over to my colleagues.
I'm going to ask one really, really tired question, and I know if we were in chambers, you all would throw your glasses at me, and I'll apologize for that. But are we paying a data retention fee and are we getting a return on investment for our license plate reader cameras? I think our property crime rate is, is, well, our property crime reports, it seemed to indicate we're not stopping catalytic converter thieves. That could be a complete injustice to the job we're doing, but those were sold as a way to be a high-efficiency way to stop crime. At the time, one of the arguments against was that criminals would adapt, and they would simply find ways to not use license plates that we could trace. I know we're spending money on capturing with the equipment, and we spend money to retain an enormous amount of data and secure it. Are we getting a return on investment, Mr. Mitnick?
I would like to call 911 and have our police chief comment on that.
Well, thank you, Mayor Protem. I'll, I guess I'll let this body be the judge for getting a return on investment. To date, we've had over 30 significant felony stops as related to the ALPR camera system. So these are people who were passing through town, whether they were wanted for assault with deadly weapon, stolen cars, male theft, identity theft. So I would say these were definitely people in El Segundo to prey on our residents, and I would say that we have 30 separate instances resulting in significantly more arrests than that, so to me, I would say yes, but, you know, I think that's for, you guys can decide if that's enough of an arrest for the LPRs, or if we need more, or what it is, but that's kind of our up-to-date status on that.
Chief Wayal, is that the, the readers are paying that someone is driving in, or are those something that we are using to investigate a crime that occurred in El Segundo? Are they passively catching someone driving in who committed a crime elsewhere?
Those 30 that I mentioned are passively people that are coming in town and that we've been able to arrest because of the camera system. We also have gotten additional investigative leads that I cannot talk about publicly as a result of putting information into the system and generating leads from that.
And what's our, what's our budget? How much do we spend for the ongoing program?
You caught me off guard with that question. I do believe it was a subscription, you know what, I'd have to get back to you on that, I don't have that information in front of me unless, Joe Lilio, if you have that, I don't know if you have that in front of you. Or I don't have it readily available, I cannot look for it, well, the discussions continue. And if I have any, you may could text me with that information too.
It's, you know, for me, look, and maybe it's a trivial amount of money, it may not be. It's doing exactly what you'd think a passive surveillance system does, right? It catches people coming through, it runs against, it runs all of us against the database, and then every now and then it gets one, but it's not stopping the crimes that necessarily maybe matter. Maybe it's preventing crimes that mattered to our residents because it catches people coming in, but I'm not sure that's stopping them, but it may be a trivial amount of money to this, and the program will go on. I would think it's something that I think we would be well-served to have a little bit of a report on, considering that it tracks all of our movements on a daily basis.
I do report, when I do my annual report, I have been including that information, it's also included in the quarterly KPI updates, but we can make sure we highlight that for you.
Yeah, I think the last time we had it was, it was traced to a stolen car investigation, we didn't have a conviction from it. I think it's the last check-in.
Okay, thank you, chief, thank you, Councilmember, or Mayor Protem Pimentel. All right, any further discussion about the budget? No, doesn't look like it, okay. And Tracy, remind me on protocol here, we are first, we adopt in a resolution?
Yes, you need to adopt the resolution, Mr. Hensley will need to read by title only.
And then we'll go to the general fund reserve policy after that, okay? All right. City attorney, will you please read the resolution?
Yes, Mayor and Council, the resolution adopting the 2020, 2021 final operating and capital improvement budget and the 2020, 2021 appropriations limit for the city of El Segundo is ready for adoption. This is a first, a second, and then a vote.
All right, I'll move approval. All right, I'll move approval. Okay, thank you, Councilmember Purstak. Madam Clerk, vote please.
Sir, Councilmember Drew? Councilmember Nicole?
Aye.
Councilmember Purstak?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Pimentel?
Aye.
And Mayor Boils?
Yes.
All right, all right, a resolution passes five oh.
Thank you. All right, next up, approving the general fund reserve policies. Is everyone clear on what we're approving there? Yep, okay, good. All right, do I have a motion to approve?
Drew so moved.
Thank you.
Pimentel second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, please take a voice vote.
Councilmember Drew?
Yes.
Councilmember Nicole?
Aye.
Councilmember Purstak?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Pimentel?
Aye.
And Mayor Boils?
Yes.
All right, it passes five oh.
Thank you. All right, next up is to approve the economic uncertainty reserve policy. Do you have a motion to approve?
Purstak so moved.
Thank you.
Pimentel second.
Okay, Madam Clerk, vote please.
Councilmember Pimen, I totally wouldn't, I just wrote your name down, sorry, Chris. Councilmember Drew?
Aye.
Councilmember Nicole?
Aye.
Councilmember Purstak?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Pimentel?
Aye.
And Mayor Boils?
Yes.
Can I just get a recording of this? You passed five oh, sorry.
Thank you. All right, we're on to reports.
Uh, you need, uh, Mr. Robinson is with you, so.
Oh, my goodness, he's, yes.
He's waiting patiently.
I don't see him in there. Is he, is he on the screen?
He is actually under, there he is. He came in.
Hey Matt, thanks for being here, City Treasurer, how are you?
You're muted.
And I am sharing my screen. Okay. Uh, I'll, I'll try and kind of blow through this. This is, this is, you're gonna see a lot of new stuff. I've been slowly uh changing some things and uh be interested in some feedback, potentially even after the meeting. As to what uh is useful or not useful, um but I'll continue to uh go through this here, let's see, so. Okay, uh, so this is just a portfolio summary. Uh, this basically just shows where all of our assets are. Uh, majority is uh still in Leif, um and that's, uh, I'll get into the reasons why that is. And in short, you'll see a theme throughout this, which is that nothing really has changed in the last quarter. We uh have continued to put money into Leif and, and pull money from Leif as, uh, as we need liquidity. Uh, and that's because more or less the, the Leif return is, is above and beyond anything else that we can get in the market. Um, but anyway, that, this first uh row here is the cost of, of all of the assets and the market value. Percentage of the total portfolio, about forty percent is in Leif and roughly uh fifty-five is in uh different C Ds. Corporate bonds, government bonds, municipal bonds, and supras. And you can see the yields there on a lot of the, the, kind of the reserve portfolio, which is to the right. Uh, is all pretty substantial, and that's because those, those were acquired uh earlier this year or in prior years. Uh, when yields were high and the yield curve wasn't flat and zero. Uh, so here's the interest received and some, some of the kind of transactional things that happened. Uh, we had a, we had a call in the second quarter. Um, we had a number of bonds that were matured, about five million throughout the quarter. Uh, and then we had about five hundred thousand in interest, um and you can think about that as, uh, the, the return on that interest. Uh, the portfolio is approximately a hundred million dollars, so for a quarter uh being five hundred thousand. And that's about two million that we, you would assume over a year, so that's about a two percent return. Uh, which again is above and beyond kind of what, what, what's in the market right now. So, we're still kind of riding some of the, some of the bonds that we bought in the past and, and some of the laddering that we did. Here's the uh obligatory compliance report that shows uh that we are meeting all of our constraints as imposed by the city. Uh, the C D I A C has kind of some general guidelines, and we have some more strict ones. Uh, but uh, you know, you can see everything is in compliance. Uh, we have our commitment to continuing education, which I am behind on, but uh it's a kind of a yearly thing. And uh I, there just hasn't been uh much for any of us to do. Uh, most of the things that, that Dino and Latanya did were uh prior to Covid. Um, there are some webinars that are coming up that I have my eye on. Additional compliance, uh, any of, all these medium term notes or corporate bonds, we have a maximum of three percent in the portfolio. Uh, we do at time of purchase need to have an A rating or better. There are a few of these that have dropped uh to A minus and triple B plus. Uh, namely Wells Fargo and U P S here. Um, everything else uh has maintained a, a good credit rating, but nevertheless, we, we wouldn't be selling them even if they did drop. Uh, so here are just a, a little bit easier visualization of, of where the portfolio is. You know, there, there's not a whole lot of new information in, in this particular slide, but um some people like these types of visualizations better than others. Uh, here are the investments by maturity date to kind of show how we're laddered out. There to the left, those five bars are all extremely uh short duration, which is nice to, to be getting the return that we're getting. Uh, for, for instruments that have one day liquidity. You can see that the last four bars, which are the one to two, two to three, three to four, and four to five, that's kind of our, that's our ladder. Um, we're a little short on the four to five because I've been reluctant to go out there on the yield curve that far. Because we're really not getting anything to do so, um and I'd kind of rather wait and bide our time and uh stick with the short duration things. Uh, instruments while the uh yield curve is as flat as it is. Know what happened there? Uh, so here's a rolling thirteen month cash flow analysis. Uh, this basically just shows kind of. Uh, what, what we've seen in terms of dispersments and receipts, which you've probably had enough of with the uh, with uh, the budget meeting. So you are all very, very well aware of, of, of the ins and outs of, of, of uh the treasury and kind of what's happening there. Um, but more or less, you can see the big inflows, um, or the big outflows, the big dispersments there um. In June and July, and then kind of uh all of our income coming in the first part of the year, which is why uh we've structured over the past. To have all, a lot of our maturities happening uh at the, the second part of the year where the, that we're kind of net negative. Here's the rolling thirteen month net change in cash. You can see the last three years have been very uh consistent in terms of, you know, where we're running a deficit and where we're, we're having a monthly uh surplus. So, um, you know, there's nothing out of the ordinary that's, that's happened over the, you know, the past three months as a. Compared to what we've seen. Now here's uh just some of the inner workings of Leif. Uh, I've kind of been over this before, but uh you can kind of see that. These are the daily rates of Leif, and they, they've really just been steadily declining as uh Leif realizes, as we have. That um all the new purchases are gonna yield uh substantially lower than old ones. Uh, and what we, technically what we buy in at whenever we um, whenever we purchase or, or submit money to Leif. Is uh this pink uh quarter to date uh series here. So, again, you know, uh, this, this only goes to, I think, beginning of August, and this has continued to drop. The, the current Leif rate is about seventy-two basis points. Uh, but one thing I want to call out here is that um ever since the rates have really been dropping, which is, you know, in March. Um, you can see that the average maturity of Leif has been going down, which uh, you know, is consistent with what I've been trying to do with our portfolio. The, the, the management team at Leif are certainly not going far out in the yield curve. Because if they were, you know, buying five year maturity instruments right now, then you would see that average maturity be increasing and not decreasing. So, they're certainly going near on the year, on the yield curve as well. Um, their duration is, is dropping. Um, so that's kind of consistent with what I'm trying to do with us. I don't know why that keeps happening. Um, okay, uh, this is the Leif apportionment rates. So these are just quarterly numbers that come out. This is what, at the end of the quarter, they look at the rate, and that's what you get. Uh, but you can see that that's, this is just kind of a time series of, of what, what's happened in the past, uh and where we're at right now. Uh, the details, again, this is forty percent of our portfolio, um and so you can see that most of Leif is actually in treasuries. Um, treasuries and agencies, uh you could see that the, the market value of the fund is much above book value. And the nice thing about Leif is we are essentially allowed to buy at book value, even though market value is a lot higher. Um, the P M I, the P M I A rate, which is um, what I was mentioning earlier, is the rate we receive, we receive is significantly higher than both Fed funds. And this S and P G I P benchmark. Uh, so again, just more, more uh fuel for the fire in terms of why, why we're investing in Leif currently. There's the economic environment, I'll try and speed this up, I know you guys are probably ready to move on. But uh, this is the yield curve, uh obviously at the beginning, or at the end of two thousand nineteen. Uh, we could, you know, the, these are the rates up there at the top, and I'm looking at the beginning of uh the second quarter. Calendar quarter, uh, and the end of the second quarter, you can see that really not much has changed throughout the quarter. Uh, in fact, the June thirty numbers have shown that the yield curve has even flattened further. So, I mean, if you're, you know, this shows that if you're willing to tie up money for five years, you're, you'll be compensated at thirty basis points, which is. Which is pretty bad. What's going on there? Uh, so here is the ten year minus three month uh treasury yield spread. This is that famous metric that uh is often used to uh indicate that a recession may be coming. And this is what happened earlier this year. You can see that it dips negative there. Uh, it's since become less in, or not inverted, but uh it's still a very flat curve uh from a historical perspective. Here is unemployment versus in, uh inflation. Obviously, in March, there is a huge jump, uh or April, uh and that steadily declined. It's obviously a lot slower. Businesses are a lot slower to hire than they are to fire. So, it's gonna kind of stay elevated for a while, I think, by most uh, by most forecasts. Uh, inflation has been lower than average, but I think that forecast is also expected to pick up. Uh, this is an interesting chart that shows uh, essentially, you can kind of see what the market is pricing in for inflation over the next five years. By looking at a spread between uh TIPS, which are treasury, treasury uh inflation pers, uh perspect, uh protected securities. And just a five year treasury, so this is kind of the forecast, forecasted five year inflation. You can see that that is much higher than thirty basis points, which is what you're earning on treasury bills. So, the real rate of return, if you bought a five year bond, is negative right now. Uh, so, anyway, I, I like looking at these more than economic forecasts, because this is what people have money behind. People are pricing these, people are buying TIPS, and that's kind of uh showing their, their true uh feelings about where inflation is going to be. Uh, here is the path forward. Um, so this is as of today, this is uh some data that I got from one of our brokers. He sends this every day, and I just kind of brought it into my visualization software and um, and then I added Leif in there. So, here are the latest offerings. This is kind of what we can look at to see what the options are if we were to invest a million dollars today, for instance, if we had a million dollars free up. Uh, these are the different categories. You can see there's C Ds, there's corporates, uh, supras, everything you can think of. Uh, and so obviously, you know, it, it, the, the yield curve, or the, the curve is, is pretty flat. But you can see if you go out to five years, you know, you can, you can find some things that are, you know, one percent here and there. Uh, but there are strings attached there. Uh, well, first I'll call out where Leif is right now, which is definitely an outlier here. In terms of the, the effective duration, which is how long you're essentially tying your money up for, uh and basically interest rate risk. Uh, as well uh versus purchase yield. So that, you can see the yield is about seventy-two basis points. And the, the effective duration is less than half a year. But the, what I was gonna say is that all of those other ones that look somewhat appealing right now, uh they have some strings attached, which are that they're callable. So if you remove the fact that they're callable, which essentially puts a ceiling on the, the market value of them. Because if rates were to drop even further, then those bonds would be more valuable to us. But thing is, is those companies can just call the bonds back, and we wouldn't be able to reap the benefits of essentially locking in a higher interest rate. But anyway, these non-callables, you can see that Leif is uh an even bigger outlier in terms of what we get for what we have invested. So, um, you know, we're gonna see the Leif rate continue to go down. But uh, you know, I, candidly, I thought that, that we might be transferring money out of Leif and getting into some potentially longer duration. Uh, instruments, uh, you know, this quarter, towards the end of this quarter, that next quarter. But that's gonna be a little bit touch and go as the quarter goes on. We'll just kind of see where that rate is. Um, but it's, you know, it, it, it looks pretty compelling, uh, you know, from this basis and a, many other. Arguments. So, uh, if we were to invest in some kind of longer term maturity things, this, or uh instruments. Uh, this is how our ladder would look. You can see that, um, you know, pretty much twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, and twenty twenty-three each have. You know, close to twelve million, uh with twenty twenty-four having about sixteen million in notional. Uh, so, you know, if, if, this kind of sets the stage for uh when we do start wanting to kind of move out of Leif. And getting into maybe some one year, two year, three year C Ds or, or corporates, uh that will want to be going to two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. I really don't think that we want to be going out to twenty twenty-five right now, uh just because you're not being compensated for going out there. This also uh corroborates our interest in, in making sure that we have a lot of our maturities happen in Q two and Q three. Because that's when our net outflows are. Uh, you can see that those are pretty peaked in the middle of the year. So anyway, finally, the, the, I think the, the end of this is my notes, uh for kind of what we're gonna do. Uh, I'm temporarily diverged from the laddering because of the flattening of the yield curve. I really, you know, don't have any interest in tying up for money for five years to get a one, or to get a thirty basis point rate. When I can tie it up for three years for a thirty basis rate, dip basis point rate. Um, and then uh the other option that we have is uh Chase Bank, which we get a forty-five basis point uh credit against our banking fees. Which we just need to make sure that, you know, uh, once you've surpassed those banking fees, essentially goes to zero. So, um, you know, there's only a certain amount of money we'd want to put in there, but that's something that we're gonna keep our eye on. That's all I have. Um, and uh, if you have any suggestions on what you liked, what you didn't like, happy to hear them before, after, or now or, or after.
Thanks, thanks Matt. Thanks, City Treasurer, that was great. Uh, I, I think I like the new um visuals. I think they're really helpful, especially relates to what's available in the market. Uh, really useful, so thank you. Colleagues? Yeah, Mayor Protem says thumbs up, so does Carol, so does Lance, so does everyone. Great job.
Only thing I wanted to add is um, you know, Matt. You uh, you were the last treasurer. Right? And so uh, Joe, no pressure, but um, you know, that seems, uh, it, it just, I feel like. You know, a city treasurer and a city finance director, I'm not, I don't know if the, the brains are working in the same fashion or not. But uh, you know, it just seems like everything that Matt just described and what he's looking at on a daily basis and positions we should take. And, and theories and where he's getting the data and so on and so forth. It just uh, I think it's gonna be some big shoes to fill when that uh comes your way in four years.
He's setting far, very high and, and so.
Yes.
They're, they're great, great mentors in, in the treasury world, absolutely. Well, thanks so much. Thank you so much, Matt. Really appreciate it. Thanks for persevering the long evening too. Really thank you. Good stuff. All right, uh, let's see, we are on to reports. And I got my notes all mixed up, but city, usually city treasurer, they just presented. Madam Clerk, can I read their report?
Uh, a couple of things. First, I need to apologize to Matt, because apparently he was trying to get in. He was getting in under a, a number that was suspicious, so I didn't allow him. So unfortunately, that led, that led to him having to come down to chamber. So Matt, I publicly apologize for not letting you in, but it did not say Matthew Robinson. It was a funky name. Um, and I've heard too many horror stories about bombing, so anyways, we'll move on. Um, I just wanted to let you all know that the permanent ballot box will be installed tomorrow. Exciting news, at ten thirty, approximately ten thirty A M on the corner of Holly and Main. So it'll be on the city hall corner. Um, it will be there permanently for now. And um, I believe, starting early October, you will be able to deposit. October, you will be able to deposit your ballots in there. And the second second thing is the polling places so far, we're still working with the county, but the two that we have thus far are Embassy Suites and Hilton Garden Inn. Um, due to COVID and distancing and all the orders, it's making it difficult to find rooms that are able to meet the requirements that we need. We need 2,200 square feet. So um, a lot of our facilities that we normally use don't fill that requirement. Just want to give everybody a heads up that we are working diligently to um possibly get a polling place in what most people would call El Segundo proper, meaning, you know, closer to home versus being in a hotel. Um, but if you have questions, I can answer them. Otherwise, that's my update.
I don't see any questions. Thanks, Madam clerk. Appreciate that.
You bet it.
All right. Council member reports. Council member Jeru.
Yes, I I I know it's been a long night. Um, so I'm hoping you can indulge me on this one because I I do think it's important. Um, in my roughly five months since being sworn in as a council member, I've seen a lot uh from the George Floyd incident Minneapolis to the famous lady down on the beach a few weeks ago and her rant to the the number of peaceful protests and such we've had in the city. I've witnessed 20 plus people coming into the chamber during a single council meeting, you know, approximately 40 to 50 people overall and literally hundreds of letters and emails written into the council uh demanding change, demanding that we as your leaders uh make a statement of support for equality and justice, demanding that we speak out against hate and prejudice. Every time something happened anywhere in the country that demands for us to stand up and not be silent because silence is acceptance uh come rolling in. And and as a council, we responded. We try every day to do is right, what is right by our community and to do the right thing. So someone please answer me this question. Where is the outrage? Where are these equality and justice groups and individuals today? Where were they last Friday when two young deputies who were ambushed, unprovoked and shot point blank in the head while they were sitting in their car? Where was the outrage when protesters blocked the entrance to the hostel and shouted, let them die? I mean, how do we get here? How do how do we get to the point that the current environment would empower an individual to not only commit an atrocity like this, but to be applied in some circles and not vilified at all? I kept checking my city email every hour since Friday, hoping that the same groups and individuals who have been rightly fighting for justice would come out and make a statement that this cannot be accepted. Silence and empty inbox. These officers were targeted not because of anything that they did, but for their profession. That is a hate crime in every sense of the word and should be treated as such. The fact that no groups or individuals have uttered a peep about this, no one came into the chamber today. Our media has essentially pushed it to the back page. It's appalling. It is hypocrisy at its worst. We protest and mourn for events that occur across the country, yet we say nothing about something that happened 15 miles from here. Would it have mattered more uh if it had happened on Maple and Nash? Would it have mattered more if it was one of our ESPD officers? Would that have been enough to be outraged about? Seeing what you have seen, would you want to be a law enforcement officer right now? Furthermore, would you want your son or daughter to enter law enforcement as a career? Do you know that we have police officers in town whose kids come home crying because people want to seek harm come to their mother or their father simply because of their profession? It's true. You can just ask any of them. I am disgusted by this hate crime committed last Friday on these two sheriff's deputies. Furthermore, I call upon both our groups and people in town that claim to want to seek justice for all to stand up and condemn this act of cowardice for the hate crime that it is because anything else is acceptance. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Drew. Councilmember Nickel.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Uh, Councilmember Prustock.
Yes, um, I I also want to condone the acts of violence that happened against the two officers last weekend, this weekend. It is a hate crime and I hope they do um, I hope we never see that type of violence again. I also want to remind everybody that the there is a school board election coming up and there is a forum that's going to take place on Thursday, the 24th um, that the PTA is is hosting. So please, I think, believe there's going to be three forums for to learn about our school board members. There's uh three running for two positions. So please um, reach if you, I'm sure it's on the school board, uh the El Segundo Unified School Boards, El Segundo Unified Schools website. So please, um, it's important to get to know who your candidates are. And then I also want to give a shout out to our community. As you know, um, Halloween is coming up and a lot of people are worried that there won't be um trick or treating for kids. But I am um excited to let you know that the Quanis is partnering with the Rotary Club and the Women's Club and El Segundo PD and um another group, uh the National Charity League, and they're going to be developing a a something to some way to celebrate the Halloween um in our community. So be on the lookout for that. It's going to be fun and exciting. So thank you to those groups collaborating on ensuring ours, um, the children of our town have an amazing holiday. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mayor Pro Tem.
From the very exciting world of the Mayor Pro Tem, uh, some good news in progress uh with our COVID-19 pandemic regulatory response. We've been in contact. Uh, thank you to Chief Donovan on this. On every level, we've been working with the county and are very close to receiving Bi-City statistics. Um, I know right now the statistics you see from the city of El Segundo are generated by us and our projection of what we believe the data to be. We are not privy to the county's formulas for that, uh, but they do, they've stated they will be releasing that for all 88 cities in LA County. Uh, that will provide us a great deal of information about what communities can do and how communities are doing with their efforts. Uh, I want to continue to remind people that water rates are going to be in the next few meetings uh to make sure to be mindful of that. Educate yourself on what goes into those pieces. Uh, please attend the meetings. Uh, we will be walking down that as a community to understand sort of what the formulas are, why Hyperion's becoming more expensive um, and and what will go into that. Further, we have a county sanitation meeting tomorrow for the eastern half of the city to talk about uh that solid waste. Always a thrill, I know. With solid waste in mind, I know we've had some issues with smells on the west side of town. Uh, please be mindful, people, that there is a hotline. You can find that on our city website, an Hyperion huddle. Further air quality issues, uh particularly in the residential corridor, we have three different air quality sensors. You can search those online and find them. One at St. Anthony's, one at the fence line at Chevron and one right here at Oak and Main Street to see what the air quality is closest to your home. A lot of us doing homeschool and kicking kids into the yard. Uh, that is an important measure for us. Uh, to uh Councilmember Piercix's point, elections are coming up, not just for the school board, but ballots will go out. I want to reiterate. Please understand the propositions in front of you, especially 15, 19, 22. These are all so new and ballots are coming out so quickly. None of the regional bodies has taken a position on these yet. Uh, there is a ton of fine print on each one. 15 uh and 22 affect you in 19 will affect you directly uh in terms of your property tax. So it's important to note whether it's your business or your home for 19. Air traffic's returning to normal. Uh, that will make it much louder. We've gotten accustomed to a quieter city. There is a new portal that I know Councilmember Jeru published, as did the city, so you can track airport noise. And lastly, uh, I had the pleasure of doing the drive by 100th birthday on Sunday. I know we're not supposed to do hundreds or drive bys for birthdays, but a 100th birthday uh we'll attend. Uh, El Segundo Police Department was there. It was marvelous. The woman had a blast. Uh, when you think of what someone accomplishes in a centenary, that's seeing, you know, going to school in a sleigh to a man on the moon before your 50th birthday, which is a really remarkable concept. Uh, and I have talked enough tonight uh for three meetings. I apologize to my fellow council members. My voice is not that great.
Thanks, Mayor Pro Tem. The quick thing, council of government, South Bay City's council of government unanimously uh supported endorsing the Restaurants Act, which is federal funding for restaurants, much needed. We had actually Jackson Calb, who's uh the proprietor of Jamin Otteka, speak at the Cog. About a month ago, I brought him in to speak and he kind of gave an overview of how bad it is. And I may have mentioned this before, but there's something like more than 10 times the number of restaurant employees that there are airline employees, yet the airlines got billions of dollars in uh federal funds and the restaurants have received nothing to date. So far greater impact than the overall economy and the Restaurants Act will help to improve some of that. So it has to go to the board, but that's good news. Hopefully that thing gets approved. And uh also Chris started to talk about the what we've asked for, well, the metrics that are being collected at the county level and that we've gotten a commitment from to get at the city level. So we have a better indication of how we're doing as it relates to COVID-19 control. And we wrote a letter to Governor Newsom last week. We expect to get, and what we asked him was allow us the opportunity essentially to be tracked independently of the county as a whole and allow us to move to the tier, the new tiers that they've developed based on how we do, not how LA County does essentially. We expect that they will say no, and then we've been talking about what we do next and how many other cities are in a similar situation in LA County and the rest of the state. And I know there are several around us that would love to get similar concessions. In fact, Torrance has written a similar letter that we have endorsed as a city, um similar to ours, but not quite as specific. So uh, just know public that even if we get a no from the governor in terms of getting the approval to be measured independently independently, we're not going to stop there. That's all I have. Uh, city attorney, any reports?
Just like to uh say congratulations to uh Rod Spackman and uh wish him the best in his retirement. And uh, that's it for this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hensley. City manager.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I don't have any additional follow up other than what we've already committed to do in terms of the the items follow up from the budget and other portions of the agenda. The next city council meeting uh will be on October 6th, but prior to that on September 21st and I believe it's 28th, you'll be interviewing um candidates for the DEI committee and that's technically, those are technically council meetings. Uh, on the on October 6th, we have a few items worth pointing out. We have the water and wastewater rates uh report that we've already made reference to. Well, we will have a study session on the Park Place Infrastructure Funding and Tax Increment District. Uh, and um, that that is a study session to bring you up to speed on 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 that topic. The DEI committee appointments are scheduled for the 6th. And then um, we will likely have uh an update from the environmental committee. Remember, council, you did ask that we start having your committees come to your, excuse me, the citizen committees come to council with updates on what they've done over the past year and what they're going to work on for the year coming up. So you'll see those at least once a month. And the Arts and Cultural um Committee will have well, I'm sorry, there'll be a discussion of the gateway projects on um on the gateway project. I'm getting tired. I apologize on October 20th. That's it, council. I want to thank you again for your support for the budget. And one last thing, I'd like to thank and acknowledge the um, the executive team. Um, I I almost want to call them out each by name. I know you'll get mad at me, but they worked their tails off to get you a balanced budget as did all the men and women in their departments. Uh, they they did not say a whole lot tonight, but they they're they're responsible for what was in front of you. Thank you, council. Appreciate your support.
Thank you, Mr. Mitnick. All right, we're going to close the season uh this evening in memory of Drake Walker. It is 9:23 PM adjourned. Thank you.